Being a couple of minutes past seven, I'm going to open this meeting. I'd like to remind everybody that the meeting is being recorded tonight as well as televised, I guess. Okay, our first order of business tonight is recreational marijuana bylaw public hearing. Can we read the public hearing notice? Do we have it?
Oh, yeah.
Put a second motion away with the press.
Um, I think, would you like me to? Uh, notices hereby given that under the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room 14 of the North Reading Town Hall, 235 North Street, for the purpose of considering an amendment to the code of the town of North Reading zoning bylaws to prohibit licensed recreational marijuana-related businesses. The proposed amendment does not propose changes to the zoning bylaws currently in place regulating registered marijuana dispensaries selling medical marijuana. The complete text of the proposed amendment is available for inspection at the Community Planning Office at North Reading Town Hall, 235 North Street, North Reading, Mass., between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM Friday. Published in the North Reading Transcript February 2nd and 9th, 2017.
Thank you. Um, I would like to defer to Mr. Prisco. Would you be willing to make a presentation for the Board of Selectmen on this?
I first want to apologize for the drop in attention. So can you just?
All we did is read the public hearing notice.
On the marijuana?
Yes.
Okay.
And could you tell us the Board of Selectmen's position?
Yeah. So, you've been reading the papers and you've been watching some of our meetings on the last month, so... The discussion about marijuana has actually been taking up most of our meeting time, recreational and medical. And as we've been discussing the medical, I think everyone kind of knows where that is right now, the discussion of recreational came up and it was pretty clear across the board, the members of the Board of Selectmen, that we, as a board, are not in favor of recreational in town. We felt that it's just not right for the town. And if you go back and look at the results of the vote for the recreational marijuana, it failed in the town of North Reading, but it won overall for the state. So we felt that since the majority of the town was against it, we, as a board, don't want it in town. We felt that we should take advantage of the law as it's currently written and based on Town Council, we have the right to go ahead and put this warrant article in to prohibit recreational in the town of North Reading, and then we'd take that to a ballot vote in May. And we'll take advantage of this special town meeting that we have on March 13th to do that. And that's, as you see, if you have in front of you the warrant article, and that's what our ultimate goal was. Kate, you want to present any more on that? Or, you know, I think I summarized it, and I believe it was unanimous for the Board of Selectmen in support of that warrant article. And I think that's really all I... Do you have any questions for us?
Um, you have some comments for the board first, and then you can comment to the board at all on this?
Not this time.
Okay, I'm going to open it to the public for questions. Please state your name and address when you ask the question, and address all your questions through the chair. Are there any questions from the public on this? Yes?
I need to use a microphone, Warren.
I just wanted to ask if you guys want speakers.
Okay. Well, we should have speakers here, so I don't know if we...
Yeah.
Try to keep got it. Okay, are there any, anybody else from the public who'd like to ask questions on this? Yes?
One question maybe because I'm not, I'm against it. Why shouldn't you project it out of hand?
I think that Kate Manu Pelli from the Board of Selectmen, and the legalization was enacted by the state, so even though it's still prohibited federally, there's state regulations in place permitting this, and the opt-out provision of the regulations allows us to say no to sales in North Reading. So each town has the ability to, each city or town has the ability to opt out. And we heard from a number of people, just in the context of the medical dispensary hearings, stepping forward with that recreational and their desire to see to it that we prohibit the sale in North Reading. So I think that's, you know, you heard from Mr. Prisco, that's why. There's really no answer directly to that question. No one really has given any sort of specific guidance, but the federal can still come in and enforce the federal regulations that different states have enacted to permit the sale in their own state, so it's yet to be, yet to be determined.
I didn't realize that state legislation superseded federal, so it's like, you know, states, this whole thing strikes me as strange, the way you operate a state.
Technically, I don't think that it does, to be honest with you, but it's so many states now that have enacted this legislation and allowed, and up to and including the recreational, that it's very difficult to see how the federal government takes their stance. But it almost, it harkens back to Revolutionary War days when, when the states had all the power and the federal government was very weak. I mean, and that was kind of the way our forefathers had it figured out. States do have some pretty powerful rights, and this, so far, the federal government has not conceded in any of these states that have, that have allowed this, so it's, it's a, I think it's a, it's a bridge yet to be crossed, and I agree with you that there should be something, the federal government should either recognize this or at least remove the stipulation to it. If this is what the states, if this is what the states want, they do have, they do have their rights. Yes, Kate?
I think just one more thing to add, too, that if we don't step forward and attempt to, to what we're trying to do via the bylaw and the ballot measure, anyone can come in and sell anyway. We don't regulate it by pro per se, too. So I think that was an important piece of why the board, like Mike said, wanted to do this now.
Yes, Mike?
Just one quick.
Mr. Prisco, add to that.
You can see, though, the disconnect between the federal and the state on this is another reason why we should take this action now and take advantage of this ability to opt out, because we don't know what's going to be coming down the road. This openness now to marijuana, it seems to be gaining a lot of speed. We had Senator Tarp here for our last public hearing regarding the medical, and he did say to us that he thinks we're going down the right, going in the right direction with this, the step we're taking tonight and what we plan to do in May. And he has no guarantee where it's going to end up. Even if we do this, and we enact this, we prohibit it, down the road, it's, it may get superseded anyway. So let's take advantage of what we can, because it gives us a chance to take a deep breath and to take it all in, protect the town in the meantime, while the legislation is battling this out and getting the details worked out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prisco. And I agree with a point that we, that, but we could, we could also do a more, a one-year moratorium, which is another thing that many of the communities have done, enacted moratorium on making a decision on that. Because the, the thing that bothers me about it is that the state hasn't even finished. They don't even have a final rule yet. And what that is, as you mentioned, could supersede anything you do right now. So it may be that a moratorium is a better step, because it doesn't put us in line for what might be, well, similar to the medical marijuana. If we'd have denied that, we would have been in line for a suit, because, because the state mandated that we, that we allow that. So there is always that possibility that they could also say freedom, that the freedom to do this is inherent in the law because of the vote of the people. I believe in this town, it was a 48 to 52 split. It was pretty close. So again, you could run into some opposition. Whereas in a moratorium, which we're, which you, which will buy you approximately the same amount of time, maybe a little more, actually, you might have a chance to see what the state's really going to do and maybe make a more informed decision at that point. That's my, that's my feeling on it.
Just a clarification, too, on our position on this. If the CPC elects to take that stance and to go in that direction and not go forward and not support this warrant article, perfectly fine. The Board of Selectmen are going to then take the step, and we're going to take this article over, and we're going to process it forward if the CPC elects not to. I just want to let you know, because we talked about that. We talked about doing the moratorium, but we felt pretty strongly that we should take advantage of our position now, because we may not get another one. And I think the ones that don't do it, I think are actually taking the risk. I see where you're coming from, and we've had a lot of debate on it, but I'm only speaking for myself personally. Mrs. Manu Pelli can chime in if she'd like to, but I just want to make sure you're clear of what the Board of Selectmen's position is on this, and I don't think I've misrepresented our position.
And I just think the one specific in the legislation is the ability for each community to opt out, which is the path that we embarked upon, is creating the bylaw and then putting it to a vote to see what the people in the town want to do with it. So we're, we're actually committed to that one specific thing in the legislation that guides us as to what we can do right now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it does say that it would have to be by, by a vote, by actually an election-style vote in order to bring that, bring this, bring this forward, so. I don't think we've made any decision on it. We just, we keep reading the information from Town Council, and there's a little wiggling room in there, you know, which says, which makes us wonder exactly, you know, where they, where they're really coming down on this. So I think we're going to take a little longer look at that and probably make our recommendation at town meeting, make sure that we've got as much information out of them as we can. Is anybody on the, any, any more question, any comments or questions from the public? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask one more time, is there any input from the board at this point?
Um, I, I, I...
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going along, I'm leaning to go along with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
But I'm well on the way to town meeting.
Yeah.
But I'm leaning that way that we just don't want the recreational.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just my personal opinion.
My only, my only concern is that we need to do it in such a way that we don't do something that gets overturned by the state, and then we, and then, and then you would be back where you started from, as opposed to waiting to see what their final rule is and then dealing with that.
Yeah, and I can understand why you want to see what they say finally, but that is the way I, I lean at this point.
Okay. Any other, any further questions or comments?
I'm Michael Gilberto, Town Administrator. Just one point relative to the kind of developing situation regarding the recreational marijuana issue in Massachusetts. So Town Council, specifically Jonathan Neifman and Copeland Page, did have some communication with the Assistant Attorney General charged with approving town bylaws. And the feedback that he got with, from her, which was within the past two weeks, was that in terms of a prohibition of sorts like the one the commission is, is having a hearing on this evening, that the type of zoning bylaw that has been submitted would be the course of action that they would anticipate a town would receive. So I just want to provide that to the commission, that we effectively were advised as such by our attorney, who spoke with the Assistant Attorney General that approves these bylaws for the board's information. Thank you.
So what you're saying is it would be done, using the zoning bylaws, how it would be done?
For a prohibition of recreational marijuana in this way, yes, that's what we've been advised of, based on the law as written today.
Okay. Okay, any further comments, questions? If we're done, then I'm going to close this public hearing. And I'm assuming the board is okay with making that decision at town meeting?
Sure.
And actually, if we get any further information, if we decide, we'll publish that. We're going to take a vote on it, you know, because there are a few things I would like some answers to, which I haven't had the opportunity to get yet. We did do a moratorium, if you remember, on, on medical. It worked out beautifully. It gave us an opportunity. We came up with a great law that went through the first time. We let some of the other communities make the mistakes, and we learned from them. And then we did a perfect law the first time through. So that's part of my concern, is I want to make, I want to see what doesn't fly, so that what we do does fly.
I understand.
Okay? All right, thank you all very much. Okay, let's see, we've got a few more minutes before we go to the amendments to the zoning bylaws. So...
Got some minutes you could do.
Let's do some minutes. Mr. Pelli, would you have some minutes you might present to us here?
Yes. Which ones do we? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated Tuesday, January 13th, 2017.
Speak up, please.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion to January 3rd, 2017, and second, is there any changes, any discussion? If you're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Look at, let Director Cho five in favor, no opposed.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated Tuesday, January 30th, 2017.
Second.
Do you have a motion in the second? I was not at that meeting, so I will abstain. Any comments or questions on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. So let Director Cho four in favor, one abstention.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated Tuesday, February 7th, 2017.
Second.
Do you have a motion in the second? Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm, I'm going to abstain on that one also. So four in favor, one abstention. I was not at that meeting. I did read through all those meetings, but I will abstain. Okay. Do we have any, let's see. Want to look at any of the, we have time for any ZBAs?
Sure, we can, we can get started.
We have an application from 28 Lowell for a special permit for 15 to 25 chickens.
Usually we don't object, as long as there are no roosters.
I don't see any, any further information on it. That's just, that's all we have, is that one little sentence.
That's it.
Right.
A little hard to decide on that. But I, I guess my comments would be Board of Health. I'm assuming they have Board Health permit and proper facilities to maintain those, those animals and contain them. And of course, the roosters, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments from the board on that one? Any further?
It, it looks to me if maybe an egg, I mean, with that many chickens, we're going to be selling eggs. Or maybe she's just doing it for the meat, but that's a lot of chickens, that's a lot of eggs.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You can't, you can't eat that many eggs in a week, I don't think. You know, you're talking, if it's 15, that's what, 105 eggs if you get one a day, which is not unusual.
Okay.
So that might be something to look at.
Perhaps the board of people should ask exactly how this is all going to work out.
Okay, we can note those questions. Okay, then we have 35 to 37 Main Street, which is the application that is currently before the CPC for site plan review for self-storage and retail. I believe we'd indicated to them that based on the updates and revisions they made in their site plan review application, that the board would be supportive of the variance that they're seeking from parking. And actually, they also identified the need for a variance from loading requirements. They're required to have three docks, but will only have two. So I just wanted to see if there was any other feedback, comments, things we want them to consider, other than that we support the plan as it's been submitted to the CPC.
Anybody, anybody on the board have any comments?
I...
I think we've gone through that fairly thoroughly with them, so I think we all know where we're going with that, so.
I, I think the gentleman that's putting this forth has changed a lot since the first time we met him.
Right.
I mean, he came, you know, maybe there was some misunderstanding, and, and he tried to get his zoning relief on all his barking and just put what he wanted in there, and he came to us, and we told him we wouldn't support that, but we would support him if he did some other things, and he, and he has, so, you know, it's, it's not a bad-looking building. It's going to be a lot of empty building, but we may get some business out of it otherwise, so.
So I guess we, we're going to be, we'll be in support of that.
Okay. Okay, we have 100 Central Street.
Should be 108 Central Street, I think.
Oh, you're right. It should be 108 Central Street.
Yeah.
Okay, 108 Central Street for a hot sauce, a home occupation special permit for making hot sauce.
Okay, any comments from the, questions from the board?
Mr. Spears? Deliveries and shipments, that would be the only thing. I don't know how he's going to do all that.
I would, I was thinking more along the lines of Board of Health oversight of the facility, the cooking facility.
Well, I think that...
It appears that it's probably something that could be done within the confines of the bylaws, far as space, square footage and all that goes. However, you know, Chris is right, the shipping of it or the, and so forth, how that would all happen, and, and whether or not the Board of Health is involved in overseeing the facility so that he doesn't ship something that's not good. Not sure how that would work in a situation like this.
I can note those questions.
Yeah.
Okay. Should I say, any comment about does not object, if these are considered, or should I just raise these as comments and questions?
Well, as I, as I said, it could probably be accomplished within the square footage and within the parameters in the, in the bylaw.
Okay.
Outside of the fact that, you know, you know, other than the method for shipping or receiving, as Chris mentioned there.
Materials, you know.
And then again, and Mike, and that, that's a valid concern that he brought, but health is the other one. So if those questions are adequately addressed, I suppose we would be okay with it.
Okay.
I think that's the, that's the answer.
Okay. Then we have 127 Elm Street. There are a couple of images I've put in here, just the aerial view, the parcel map. This is an addition. The last PDF that you have in the folder is the plan that was submitted. And I also did a kind of a zoom out of the, oh, it's not in here. I had done one that was a little further zoomed out. This property that you see that surrounds it is the back of McIntyre. It's owned by the Homeowners Association.
It's a different drop box.
Oh, it's under E. Okay, no, it's here, it's here. So just to kind of give you the context of what's around this parcel.
This, this addition is larger than the original house.
Yes, I see that.
If you've noticed, it's kind of like, and then he's going to violate that sideline by a lot, 7.7 feet, nine inches.
Yeah.
Just because it's unoccupied land, it's still a violation there.
Do we know who that so-called unoccupied parcel belongs to?
It's from McIntyre Crossing, it's, the Homeowners Association owns it. I think it was open space from the subdivision.
So it's designated as open space in the, in the subdivision, not something they could transfer to him to, transfer to him in some way?
They could put access there, though, if they wanted to get in there and use it, you know? If you look at it, I don't think we...
Comes to kind of a point on Elm Street there, so.
Well, yeah, but if they can get a driveway, and all of a sudden, you know, the house is right there, and then the trees are all gone.
Yeah.
You know, it's one of those. He's building to his lot line, he's using the trees of the neighbors to...
I would imagine that our comment should be neighbors, which is usually what we say, and maybe a question on hardship, whether or not...
What is it?
Yeah, whether or not it could be done differently.
There isn't hardship for this, really.
Yeah.
Right, there's no hardship for land.
Whether it could be done differently to be a little more sensitive to the zoning.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Good.
Look at that. You're right on time.
Okay.
Are you warm? I'm working like to shut it off. Okay, being 7:30, I'm going to open the public hearing for the amendments to the zoning bylaws that we have. Do you, do we want to make a presentation on any of these?
Yeah, I have a few slides to do a brief overview. John has the public hearing notice, one of us can read it.
Okay. Sure, why don't you read the public hearing notice, please, John?
Oh, okay. Okay.
I'll read it.
It's a long one. Notice is hereby given that under the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, at 7:30 PM in Room 414 of the North Reading Town Hall, 235 North Street, for the purpose of considering amendments to the code of the town of North Reading zoning bylaws as follows. One, amending the bulk and coverage controls and the minimum building size requirements of certain permitted uses of Section 200-40 pertaining to the industrial office zoning district. Amending the provisions of Section 200-90 multifamily residential to clarify their application. Three, amending the definition of overlay district in Section 204, Word Usage and Definitions. And number four, amending the zoning map of the town of North Reading to add a new multifamily overlay zoning district consisting of the following parcels. 104 Lowell Road, Map 7, Parcel 2. 102 Lowell Road, Map 14, Parcel 148. 100 Lowell Road, Map 14, Parcel 9. 96 Lowell Road, Map 14, Parcel 142. And 96 Rear Lowell Road, Map 6, Parcel 3. And introducing new zoning regulations into the zoning bylaw to regulate uses in the multifamily overlay zoning district. The complete text and map relative to the proposed amendments is available for inspection at the Community Planning Office at North Reading Town Hall, 235 North Street, North Reading, Mass., between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 and 1:00 PM Friday. Published in the North Reading Transcript February 2nd and 9th, 2017.
Thank you, Danielle.
So these are changes, I don't know if this is, this is working okay? I'll just speak up. So these are changes relating to the proposed development at 104 Lowell Road, or I should say redevelopment. These are changes that we have gone through and deemed necessary in order to make possible the redevelopment proposal that's been made for the, this portion of the former GT Berry property, which is the age-restricted 450 units of multifamily housing. And it consists of four changes, of changes to four sections of the zoning bylaw. The first is changes to the existing multifamily zoning district. So this is to clarify what is, what the difference is between the multifamily zoning district that exists now and how those provisions relate to what's being proposed. Establishing a new overlay over the Berry property and its surrounding properties in order to allow the 55 and over, or I should say, in order to allow the multifamily housing use. There is Article 3, which makes changes to the underlying industrial office zoning district, which applies throughout any, throughout town, anywhere that industrial office property is...
This zoning district was created to allow for this development, and it was a map amendment, and it was also a text change. And the bylaw that goes with it has certain provisions that pertain to multifamily housing in North Reading, but it says multifamily housing in Residence M only, in some provisions and not in others. So this change to the bylaw would clarify that Residence M provisions only apply to Residence M zoning district, not every multifamily housing development in town. For example, it has rules that say that the height can't exceed two and a half stories. That's actually contrary to where we have multifamily housing elsewhere in town, you know, most notably at the Edgewater, at the Edge, the Edgewood Apartments, where the height limit in that zoning overlay district allows for four stories. So this is really just a clarification that we do have a small zoning district called Residence M, that has certain provisions that go with it, and it just goes along to each of those provisions and clarifies that that only applies to Residence M. There's another multifamily housing overlay district that would go over the properties that we're actually looking to add this use to. So we have the proposed development. Turn this on. Okay. Oh, oh. Excuse me. So the, the multi-development is what's proposed, the age-restricted housing. This is 102, this is 104 Lowell Road, this is 102, which is also for sale. This is the Edgewood Apartments, Rita Muller Field, and other town-owned property. So the proposed overlay zoning district would be for that entire section of what is currently zoned as industrial office. It doesn't change the underlying base zoning. It simply adds a new overlay, which allows for this additional use of multifamily housing. The underlying IO zoning remains intact. There are, there's a provision in this proposed multifamily zoning overlay district that controls, that states that all the dimension, dimensional and density controls are as stated in the underlying zoning. So there are a couple of exceptions to that. So building separation needs to be twice the required side yard setback. There's another provision currently in industrial office that requires for a much greater setback between buildings. This is something that I have, you know, I've sent this question and some documentation about it to the fire department to make sure that they didn't have any issues with it. I have not gotten any feedback on that. I haven't heard that there is any issue with that. The other difference between the overlay and the, and what's allowed in industrial office currently would be for parking. So currently, all parking spaces in North Reading need to be 10 by 20 feet, otherwise they need zone, they need relief from the zoning board of appeals. These, this overlay would allow for indoor garage space only, parking spaces as small as nine by 18. And that was something that was pretty critical to the proposed development. Two spaces per unit are still required. This was something that we had talked about a little bit, whether this is something that we would wanna consider for a lesser parking, but it was decided that, you know, this board really felt strongly that two parking spaces per unit was what we should stay with, which is the zoning that applies elsewhere in town. Again, just the, the map to show which parcels would be affected by this. This is currently industrial office, and it would be these, these five contiguous properties. Other changes are proposed that affect all of industrial office. So it would be not only this section of industrial office, but all of Concord Street. These are actually changes that the CPC has previously talked about and had planned to bring forward at a future town meeting anyway. Changing the building, the minimum building height. Currently, it's at 50 feet. We had talked about going up as high as 80 feet. What we came to was that 60 feet would be an appropriate height limit currently to change it to, just, you know, in recognition that it, it can be difficult to get the kind of development that we've been looking for at only 50 feet, and we had also heard feedback that in order to make this development work, they really needed 60 feet. This was something that this board had talked about as being appropriate elsewhere in town for industrial office. There's a clarification that was needed. There is an existing provision that says that when you have garage parking, it doesn't count toward a height limit up to a story and a half. We also wanted to clarify that there's a number of feet associated with that. So it's a story and a half or 15 feet, does not count towards the height measurement when you have garage parking. And there was another provision that this board has also discussed, and has previously agreed that it would be a good idea to make a change. In industrial office, if you want to have a certain type of retail business, most retail is restricted to buildings that are 50,000 square feet or greater. And we have previously talked about this being a provision that's probably unnecessarily restrictive and could potentially be problematic. It doesn't actually affect the particular proposal that's been made for 102 Lowell Road, the age-restricted housing. It actually doesn't affect that at all because there is no retail in that space. But it could potentially affect 102 Lowell Road, which is the other property that the town is looking to sell, and also just seemed like something that we should get rid of as being a little bit, you know, just unnecessary. Another change that's proposed is just to our word uses and definitions. We have a definition of overlay district, which is a little bit problematic because it states that where you have an overlay and you have base zoning, it's always the more restrictive that controls. It's actually not. You know, an overlay can be more restrictive, where there are additional rules and regulations that have to be followed, or it can be less restrictive. And we actually have both. So we have, you know, the effort protection district, which has an additional set of rules that you have to follow in addition to base zoning, or you can have something that's less restrictive, like the Berry Smart Growth Overlay, the 40R district. That's, that's an overlay district that just allows for more types of uses and is a less restrictive zoning district. So we really wanted to change this, which would have been an inconsistency in our zoning bylaw anyway, and could have potentially created a problem for the proposed development, and just eliminate the provision that says that it's always the more restrictive that controls, because sometimes it's the less restrictive that controls. And so that's a basic overview of the four changes that affect industrial office and the properties around the former Berry Center. I'll turn it back to Warren.
Thank you, Danielle. Just for those who don't, aren't completely clear on why we're making all these changes, it has to do with the sale of that Berry property, the remaining Berry property, and we need to make some of these zoning changes in order to allow us to entertain the, the offers that we've had and move forward with that sale. So these are relatively important, they're not just something we can, they're important to, to our moving forward with that whole process. And I, and I know that we, she mentioned for a minute there about the parking, and without saying why, one of the reasons that we stuck with the two cars per thing is because there's no public transportation over there. If you had public transportation, you could have probably put some wording into, limit the number of parking spots, the number of garage areas, which is not a great use of property. However, in this case, there is no public trans, and so the two, the two parking spots per unit is, we held on to that, so. Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, now I'm gonna open up to the public for any comments or questions on any of those amendments, the zoning bylaws you saw. Anybody have any comments or any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm good, I will then close the public hearing. I believe we'll hear these again before the town meeting, at the Board of Select meeting. So if you think of anything, you'll have another opportunity to comment or question on them.
Do we wanna make a recommendation?
Sorry?
Would we like to make a recommendation, or do we wanna hold?
Oh, yes, of course. Yeah, we can, I just wanted to make sure everybody was all set. No more questions, no more comments. Mr. Briscoe?
Just a quick comment. I wanna thank all the members of the CPC for taking such quick action on this. We do appreciate the support. We know that we put a really tight timeline on you by picking March 13th as our special town meeting, and I know you pushed a lot aside of the business to do this, and I just want, on behalf of the Board of Select, I wanted to thank every one of you for working so hard and diligently to get it to this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we can, do you have a motion for us to, a motion of support, or do we need to?
We can just make a motion to support the four amendments at town meeting.
Okay, Mr. Coe, do you agree with that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so moved, then.
Second.
And I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show five in favor and no opposed. We support, we support the amendments, completely.
I think that's it.
Okay. We're actually ahead of schedule. Pardon?
We're ahead of schedule.
Well...
They are.
Usually we thought there might be a little more comment, more questions, so.
Oh, who's second? I think Chris is second today. Chris, this is the second? Okay.
Want to do, any, do you have some updates for us?
Let me see. The informational hearings, or sorry, the, the informational hearings for Warren articles will be March 6th at the Board of Select meeting. So, did we have a, is eight o'clock, I think?
You know, the schedule flows yet, Mike?
I'd have to defer to the town administrator, but I would, I believe it's eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike.
I just wanted to mention, if anyone wanted to do the citizen planner training collaborative, there's an all-day training in March, sorry, I think it's March 23rd, it's a Saturday. I know Bill said he wanted to do it. If anybody else wants to do it, I'll send around the link. It actually, the way we needed to set it up, we've done it before, you actually have to put in your credit card and get reimbursed, but I just wanted to bring that up if anyone else is interested in doing that. See if we have anything else. Then that's not the day. Let me see if I can find the date for you. Sorry. I'll find the date and send it back around again. It's toward the end of March, and it's a Saturday. I had another follow-up inquiry from the Brownie Troupe that had asked about the history of our town colors and street signs. I had learned that the, just to follow up on that, that it was inspiration of Notre Dame that made the schools vote in the 50s to, to make those the North Reading colors, which I thought was interesting. They had a follow-up question, which is, when did we decide to have the street signs changed from black and white to yellow and gold? Or, sorry, to, to gold and green? And I was wondering if anyone happened to know that. There are a few left, but I don't see very many of them. And I couldn't find that in our subdivision regulations, when we started telling people to install them.
When you changed the signs to green and gold?
About 10 years ago, maybe?
Maybe 12, yeah, at least, at least. Time flies.
Mrs. Romeo probably knows that.
... discussion of Dave Hamlin and the colors. That's when he decided, the state was, it was some kind of a change the state wanted, so Dave, and you could do the colors that Dave said, we will do the green and the gold. You know, 10, 15 years ago, it was in that time.
Yeah, well, obviously in Dave Hamlin's reign, when he was...
Yeah, yeah, it was near the end.
That's approximation for you there.
Was it during the '62 reconstruction?
Pardon me?
No, no. Oh, Route 62.
Yeah, Route 62.
I don't know.
Because the state was gonna supply all those signs, and we had to tell them what color to make them.
Yeah.
I don't remember, to be honest with you.
Those were the ones on 62, yeah.
Yeah. Mrs. Romeo probably knows that answer. She's good with that kind of history.
What the state did, they came up with, like in the town of Reading, they had the wood signs they used to make.
Right.
Couldn't use them anymore.
Right.
You had to use a standard sign, and you had two choices on the height of the letters.
Right.
And, and you could make them colored, and everybody in the state had to go, 10, 15 years, yes, so much.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Okay, we still have a few minutes before our, let's see, eight o'clock continued public hearing for 20 Main Street, so I guess we can take a short break if you'd like. Okay, being 8:30, oh, eight o'clock, I'm sorry, I'm gonna open the public hearing for 20 Main Street. It's a continued public hearing. So, gentlemen.
Yes, good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Dutton, I am a site civil engineer with the, with Archie O'Connell, the associates. I have with me tonight Attorney Michael Fadden, Project's Land Use Attorney. I also have with me, rock beyond, Mr. John Lucci, Mr. Gene Sullivan, who is John Lucci's Site Civil Engineer, who also assisted me with this project. Our traffic engineer, Mr. Giles Ham, and Mr. Lou Meister from TM Crowley, the CEB's developer. Essentially, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we're here as a continuation of our, of the December 20th planning board hearing, in which the planning board has asked us to take a, have a look at the drawings, try to address some, a number of the comments that have came up at that hearing. We have, we believe we have addressed those, and I'll summarize those quickly in a minute. We did make a submission of updated site plans back early this month, on February 3rd. So just to kind of quickly summarize, the site plan submission set that was filed on the 3rd of February was revised as follows. We did add to the plan set an eight-foot-high noise attenuation fence. The attenuate, the noise attenuation fence is, is proposed to be installed along the entire rear property line, Old East Gate Plaza. So essentially, we get the property corner of three, verdict road. It would run in the normally direct direction towards property corner with 17 verdict road. We have provided details of that fence, that is part of the site plan submission package. We have also added to the, to the site plans bike rack locations, that was requested at the last hearing. There are two sets of bike racks being planned. One would be located, that one is part of the CBS parking lot area, which general location. And there's a second set of bike racks to support the small, identify the small store that jigged in this corner right here, which is adjacent to the auto zone area. Another area that we were asked to look at, we heard some comments regarding some traffic, internal traffic flow on the property, of concern was that the existing, the curb cuts, the existing curb cuts located along Main Street. There are basically a lot of conflicts with vehicles entering and exiting from Main Street into the site with internal flow. So what we have proposed, or a way to alleviate that problem, is we have, the two curb cuts that we are maintaining, we have kind of defined parking as follows. We have, we have defined the throat where traffic would come in and out, we did a defined pattern, we operate under stop-by control. We've also had additional curbing and parking along, we pushed it back, it went off of Main Street. And again, defined the ends of the rows with island handcuffs. And again, with more pronounced, the smothering most curb cut, such that customers, vehicles entering and exiting the site will have a clear path of that, to channelize themselves through it, and eliminate that cross diagonalization of people trying to get out and people like. In addition to that, there was also a concern that was raised from our site plan set about some site line conflicts at the CBS pharmacy window as it exited with respect to the location of compact areas. So to alleviate those problems, what we've done is we have removed the compact or dumpster area from being attached to the rear of the building wall, and located in this general corner and here. We have added some traffic control striping and signage to, again, further facilitate traffic circulation and movements. We've identified a striped area for loading zones, so that one of those where recharge is, is at the store, it's up against the building, it allows clean lines of sight at the pharmacy window exit and navigate through, through, through.
I don't think he's good enough for all that.
In addition to that, it was a request made, if you remember, the initial photometrics plan that we submitted, which primarily focused in on the CBS portion of the parking facility. We expanded that and included the entire photometrics plan of the entire parking, parking facility area. And in addition, we've updated our... So, to alleviate those problems, what we've done is we have removed the compact or dumpster area from being attached to the rear of the building wall and located in this general corner and here. We have added some traffic control striping and signage to, again, further facilitate traffic circulation and movements. We've identified a striped area for loading zone, so that one of its web recharges is, is at the store, it's up against the building, and allows clean lines of sight at the pharmacy window exit and navigate through, through, uh.
I don't think he's good enough for all that.
In addition to that, it was very quest made, if you remember the initial photometrics plan that we submitted, which primarily focused in on the CBS portion of the parking facility. We expanded that and included the entire photometrics plan of the entire parking, parking facility area. And in addition, we've updated our landscaping plan. This all should be noted as we've added island handcuffs that we find to direct the main travel ways throughout the center. We've also landscaped those, and we've also updated our landscape plan to include plantings along the, the additional rain areas, as well as include a staggered row of green, hula, arborvitae trees that we installed along the
That's tahula.
property between the noise attenuation fence and the edge of the curb. So, it would be two, two buffering mechanisms in place to screen the project and, and the noise from, from anybody resonates along the verdict road. Since our December 20th, so in summary, those are the planned changes that we've, that have been performed to date, that they have been submitted in the package that I gave Danielle earlier in the month. Since that time, we have received a fi, our final peer immune response letters, both from storm water management perspective and along the traffic impact perspective. In short, both letters from DCI consultants have prepared with the methodologies behind the conclusions, and both the traffic and storm water management reports, it had no further comments. There were two minor comments with respect to the drainage study that we performed, that DCI recommended to put the planning staff, that could be written as conditions should the project be approved. And take no exception to those, to supplement that, to my supplemental information that we asked for. We have also, since our last hearing in December, we have made a trip to the Conservation Commission, we had a meeting with the Concom in January. We, we believe, although I'm not going to speak to that commission, the takeaway that I got from that meeting was we have actively addressed all of their concerns at this moment. They are subject to holding off on a formal closing of the hearing and, and a vote on the project until we conclude our process with the Planning Board, and as well as with the Board of Health. We have also submitted, in the last leg of the permitting process that we're required to go through, we did make a submission about two weeks ago to the Board of Health's Department requesting a septic system, just permit for the installation of a new septic system for the CBS funds. So, in summary, those are the changes that we made, that's the activity of the project that's been, that's occurred since our last meeting. We did receive in a copy of the staff summary report that was, that was prepared by Danielle. We're concurrent, we, we do concur with the findings of that report. We do respectfully request that one of the issues that was, I believe that may get talked about tonight, Captain's deals in signage. Our application for site plan approval did not include a signage package. We're not prepared tonight to speak about it, but we want to have to take, leave that permit. But we'd like to keep that as a separate, we acknowledge there will be permits for it, and we would like to keep that as a separate permit application in a, in an approval process. As it's going to take a little time between the sign vendor and the owner and the tenants to, to come up with a comprehensive package at that point. So, if, if the board so chooses, what we would like to suggest, or I would like to suggest, is that, that signage, that prior to issuance of any, your, your regulation was a condition that the separate signage package we approved prior to construction. We would like to take advantage of the project being approved. We had to take the prepared of beginning construction in the spring of this year, so we'd like to see if we could amend the condition that the signage package will be prepared and approved prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
I don't think so.
So, it's the only request, I guess, we would make on that hand, as, as to try to move things, progress things along in a more efficient, efficient manner. We recognize we need signage, we intend to prepare the package. It's just gonna be lagging a little bit now that we're, we're in the final stages of, of closing out areas of Planning Board Conservation and Board of Health with the whole community issue. So, in summary, that's kind of the real stand. Turn this back over, and then the consulting team, if you have time to answer any questions that we may have. If they, if they turn this back over to the board, and address any comments, concerns that they, you, you folks.
Okay.
I looked at the plant, sir, and I really couldn't figure out exactly what it was. The plantings on the islands, on the traffic islands?
Yes.
And, and the exit out onto Park Street, what type of plantings will those be? Will they be very, will they be low?
If you're referring, you're referring to these trees in here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, these, they're, these are trees in which they're six-foot-high branching type trees. They're, you know, linden, thin-beet trees, where the whole purpose is they're, they're designed to be trees within the parking lots where they're, where you have six.
The site distance is what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, you know, six feet, minimum, the six feet clearance of site, site distance, so their living of trees doesn't begin to elevation six feet above a big grave.
Okay, because I, I know that we have some, well, there's one business down there, they're gonna cut down all the things they put on that, on the, on the items, but you couldn't see. Now, what about going out onto Park Street? What's gonna be over there? Is there any plantings over there?
There, well, there's on the, on the, on the side of Park Street, it's close to the residential area.
Yeah.
That is an area where it's all shrubs and there's any wetland within it.
I'm sorry, I mean the driveway. I mean the driveway going out. Is there any plantings there?
There is, well, there is, again, small, small tree plantings, same thing, maple, maple trees.
I think you addressed.
Where the branch height is six feet above the tire.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna have to be open.
There is no, but we do, yeah, we do, we have the site distances from, as you approach the intersection with Park Street, we will rail line the site in both directions to the intersection and, uh, look, we write up towards Park.
Oh, no, oh, no, excuse me, I'm thinking with the trees there. The trees, we're gonna have to have a clear.
Yes.
Yeah, that's just my concern, because, you know, and, and that could be a problem. I did see those trees, and I said, ooh, that could be a problem.
Jeffrey.
They're gonna be six, eight feet high. Should be okay.
Okay, anybody else on the board here?
I got a bunch.
Okay. Well, let me just throw two things out.
Go ahead.
And I recognize you. Small thing, but the bike racks, you got, got one on either side of the CBS.
Yeah.
One of them next to an auto parts store, which probably doesn't sell bike parts. Is it possible to move one down a little further so that the people that would go to like, to like the other stores down there could, uh, is it just not a good space further down?
Here's the challenge, is right now on the sidewalk with this eight feet, for ADA accessible room, I need to have four feet clear with no obstructions. When you put the bike rack in, then you try to work a four feet clear, by the time you get the bike rack in, bike rack in, either the rear wheel, the bike, the bike rack is going to just be to that four feet there.
Could you put it in one of the parking spots, up further up?
Yeah.
Close to the building?
One of the concrete, um, no drive areas.
For, over this area, or?
No, you, so can you leave that one there?
The other end.
The other one could, should, you know, I was wondering if it could be moved to the right there, down.
Like in front of the restaurant?
Yeah.
The, the Mario's, right in there, and then you're splitting that building.
Yeah, there you go.
Right, right, so the, the, I guess the.
Why, no, no, don't, get it away from the building, put it out in the parking lot.
So, the short answer is going to be, is I can take this island here and create, create a situation where it's equipped by a rack, yes.
That would be, I think that would be far more convenient for people. They'd be able to work both ends of that building, as opposed to having all the bike racks close together and having to walk, you know, 600 feet down to the place where they're actually going. It's a small thing, but I think it makes a difference in the final build. My other comment would be on the northernmost exit and entrance and exit there. Yep, um, one of them still is directly behind one of those islands. Is, is it possible to line them up with the rows? The only reason I say that is because it makes it possible for the queue to be a straight line, as opposed to, you know, you know what I mean?
So, the, 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 one of the challenges that we have is the existing site light pole that we're trying to protect. And it kind of, so that's, that's what you're seeing here with this landscaped island, that kind of worked that way out. As you're exiting this way, you'd have to stop here, and then come back to here, so we can look at, improving that, but the problem is that I'm not gonna be able to get a straight shot back up this island.
Well, the entrance is good, the entranceway is good. It drives, it drops you right into a lane that you can drive up and go to anywhere.
Right.
So, uh, but it's the exit side that's gonna, uh, create queuing problems.
Right, right in here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, again, the way, the way this, the, the way the light pole is situated, um, to get this to line up with this, pole gets hit, the pole, it is in conflict.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how you, I'm not sure exactly how, if Dan was here, he'd tell me how to do it, but, um, but if there was a way to, to mitigate that at some point, if you, if that becomes a minor change of some kind, we'd certainly accept it without.
Okay, let me go back and, and look at, and look at that.
Yeah.
Quickly, audio, and then I'll, I'll respond back.
Yeah, something, if you could do something simple to make that far more, because if they came down that other row, exit, if they knew that if there was a line there, a marking that said exit, and they took that down this row, then you'd queuing, you'd have plenty of room to queue coming out, and plenty of room to queue coming in, if, if necessary, it would give you a, give you a nice flow. More important that the people leaving have a place to queue than the people coming in. If they have a high level of business in there, that queue could get all the way back and, you know, you know, for example, when they have sales in the Christmas time, things like that, if there's a lot of stuff going on, a queue exiting could be long, and getting in doesn't matter, because once they're in, they're gonna go to whatever store they want. It's almost as if you could move that over one way or the other, so that the.
I think what you're asking for, if I may, is you'd like to see this pegged as like a kind of lineup with this travel.
Yeah.
Here and have a straight shot.
Yes, and then, and then some marking, letting people know that. It would make, getting in and out of that thing so much easier.
I can take a look at that.
Yeah, it would make, it'd make a lot of sense, too.
The conflict right now is the pole, so you need to better understand what the issues are with relocating the pole.
I don't have any serious conflicts with what you have there, but I just know from driving in and out of there and from other places like that, that, that that's something that would make all the difference in the world to people getting in and out with ease. Okay? Mr. Hayden.
Okay, so, I'm still unsure how you expect the travel behind the building. I understand how we're gonna go to the pickup window, obviously, and then you've got another bypass lane. I'm not sure what that bypass lane is gonna do us, 'cause we don't want regular passenger cars to be driving behind the rest of the, um, building.
Right.
That's there so you can leave?
Well, it, it serves two, the intent is to serve two purposes. One is as a second means of emergency access, emergency access around the small store buildings. It gives, it gives fire apparatus, fire apparatus, police apparatus, a second conduit just to circulate the buildings. The other means is that there are some smaller store tenants here, and what I mean by that is fitness place, nail salon, reliever cleaners, or barber shop. And typically, their deliveries are down to the UPS truck or FedEx truck or whatnot, so this allows, you know, in the event that, you know, these FedEx trucks come in, that they happen to be coming in off of Main Street, it gives them a conduit to be able to get to the bag into these small store tenant areas where their product is, is, you know, in a cardboard box per se, and allows access, access out. So, it provides a little bit of convenience on, on both ends. Again, it breaks, it's a good break point, because again, it serves as a queue lane for the pharmacy window, which is independent and allows, you know, some, some fire apparatus, ambulance.
So, so the travel behind the original building is all gonna be south to north, or is it two-way?
It's all in a clockwise direction.
Okay, south to north.
South to north, yes.
Okay. Now, getting in and around the pharmacy from the south corner where you've moved the dumpsters?
Yes.
You got 12 feet before you get to the concrete pad. Where's the fence around the dumpster pad?
The fence is around, it's, it's enclosed within, there is a, there is a small portion, or 12 feet of concrete, that is, instead of the pavement, it's a concrete surface, with the intent that the trucks will come in and land on the concrete pad, and then, um.
So that's.
So, the concrete pad is essentially 24 feet plus or minus in depth.
So, your enclosure for your, for your dumpsters, is the exact size of those two dumpsters pushed in there?
It's, well, plus or minus, there's a foot on each side to give them room to, to.
That's a, that's an awful closed, closed area for. I could see that, I could see either wall of that being taken out by the, by the, the truck.
I can appreciate the comment, again, CBS, this is the standard, this is a standard CBS design here. We got the, the vendors that come in, we size the areas.
What's, what's the, what I'm looking at here is, we're gonna have a tractor trailer truck coming in here, at least twice a day, going to the liquor store. Probably more, 'cause the beer runs, the different beer companies. They gotta go this way.
Yes.
So, they can actually stay in that lane, making the turn? I know you've done, I know you've, you've figured out that the, the fire truck can get back there.
Yeah.
So, that, that truck is gonna stay in that lane, so if there's an oncoming vehicle, which there will be, from the pharmacy area, um, and then you've got a truck in the loading area. So, the dumpster area is not gonna get wiped out by a vehicle going?
Well, a couple things, not, the dumpster area will not get, get wiped out.
I'd like to, I'd like to know what the distance is from the corner of, of the LA island there to the, the corner of your fence. I know it's 12 feet to the, 12 feet to the dotted line. I don't know if it's 12 feet to that corner. It looks awful tight right there. It would probably be, maybe, have you thought about turning it 90 degrees?
Well, then it would be in conflict. If I turn it 90, then I'm in conflict with the traffic coming in.
Huh? Say that again?
If I turn this 90 degrees.
And put it in the back? Well, if, if the pad is 24 feet square.
No, it's not 24.
Okay. Well, I, I, it just, well, I'm looking at it here, so I don't have any, I don't have any dimensions on this, other than what you've written in, so.
The pad is 24 long, or 24?
By 20 feet wide?
24 feet long, and the pad is 24, 24 foot long, so 24.
From east to west is 24 feet, which I'm looking at right here on your, on your plan. I have the plan in front of me on that corner. But I don't have the, the, the depth.
It's 20 feet.
20 feet. So, then your, I'm guessing your fenced area is 10 by 24, or 11 by 24?
It's, uh, 24 by 11, yeah, 11 by 24.
All right, it, it just looks like you might have more room going that way, but maybe, but if you've already tried it, then I, it just, it just looks really tight there to that, to that corner. And putting an enclosure in there and having it wiped out the first six months it's there is worthless, 'cause it's not gonna get replaced. And those enclosures are to keep the trash inside of them, when it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make it in the dumpsters, and you understand that.
Absolutely.
That's not, that's not your issue, but it's just the way life is. The other thing, your photometrics.
Yes.
The northwest corner. You know that the photometrics requirement is that you get zero spillage onto other people's property, correct?
Yes.
Uh, you're spilling light into the, uh, the animal, uh, the, the, the building that's on the right there. 24 mean? Thank you, Bill. And, and it's, it's not like a little bit, it's a lot of spillage into that corner. And, and it's, it's not like a little bit, it's a lot of spillage into that corner. You got a, you got a light pole right on the corner of the property.
Yeah, that's the existing, that's the existing.
Right, so, that's the existing condition.
Correct.
That's not what we were asking. Were we? We, we would want to know what the final condition is going to be. Are you replacing those lights with LEDs?
With LEDs, yes.
So, if you, if you, if you got the right LED light there, you should have been able to shield it properly so that your photometrics would have given you the right numbers instead of these numbers. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Also, the wall packs in the back of the building, I don't know how you can shield those wall packs so they do not impact the neighbors on the back of the building. They're going to be, they're going to be able to see visible light looking right at the, at the units.
Well, there is, there's three, there's three wall packs proposed along the way of the CVS, there is no wall packs proposed along the.
Yeah, and I don't, that I don't understand, but okay.
With, with that is again, the elevation change, you know, as we're going down, the whole every tree is in an eight-foot height attenuation fence. The wall pack lighting is only on until the store is in operation. Once the store shuts down at ten o'clock, they make those lights go on, they will not be, they will not be fine twenty-four seven. In addition to that, there's also an internal, the wall packs have an internal optic shield which directs the light directly downward, and as can, as can be seen from the photometrics plan, you have about one foot handle as you go away from the building, along the curved line of the rear access drive, and it quickly drops off as early as possible.
Yeah, well, so you're telling me you could calculate that there, but you forgot to calculate that with the new light in the front corner. I have an issue with that. Can we see the, can we get some technical designs on those wall packs? So I could review, we could review them? Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And the, your sound attenuation fence, you're missing that property right on the corner there, coming around the corner on the back drive, which looks right into the back of the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there. We had talked about this in the December meeting, about bringing that fence down all around there, and it seems to have dropped off the board. The most noise is going to be right in that back corridor, correct?
Um, I would disagree. I would probably, if any noise, it'd be, because again, CVS has all its deliveries in the morning.
I, I didn't say it was at night.
It's.
It depends on, it depends on when you sleep. It depends on when you're trying to enjoy your, your, you know, your privacy.
I don't disagree.
Okay? So, whenever there's a delivery, any of those cars running back there, it's in a, you're in a little tunnel. So, I, and I know, I know that we, we had brought that up to, to catch the back, at least that back of that property. I wasn't talking about going away, all the way around the Park Street, but I know I was talking about the back of that property. There is a stockade fence now, which you're taking down, that covers the back of that property, am I correct?
We're not touching the stockade fence.
Not touching the stockade fence.
Wait a minute, did you look at your, did you look at your plans? It says remove the stockade fence right there.
Yes.
Please.
If I may, the stockade fence that we are removing is the existing stockade fence that was parallel to the Burditt Road residence.
Right, and that's, that's actually all in one. It just curves, it's, it's the same fence. So, when you put, when you call out something on the back corner and you say remove fence, that means the whole fence, that's all contiguous, and that's a contiguous part of it.
We have identified the windows of the fences, we're not planning on removing any fencing with the property of three sixty-seven Park Street, that's not the intent.
Okay.
It's going on, it's going on, it's going on.
Let him finish, we're going to, we'll have some time for questions when we get a little further along.
And it's, and it also is not on your drawings, because I could see your drawings really good when I zoom them in.
I'm okay.
Okay? I still, I still think the, the sound fence there would be even better than your, than the old stockade fence, which I'm sure is twenty years old or plus, I'm not, I may be incorrect on that age, but I'm, I'm taking a guess.
The, the fence you may hear refers to angles across three.
Right, and I don't expect you're going to be able to continue that there because it's going to be in your way.
That's right.
For construction. But, so you're taking it down?
Yes.
Right, that's what I just said, you said you weren't.
I was under the impression you were referring to a stockade fence that was on property of three sixty-seven.
Well, I'm not, you, you can't touch their fence.
No, we're not touching any of that, but yeah, we're touching fence that's on our property.
Right, and, and I'm looking at it right here, right across it, it says to be removed.
Yes.
But that's, I'm asking you to replace it along the, the line where you can. And if you, if you can, I want to know why. What was the other thing? Was there something else? I think that's all I got right at the moment.
Moving that fence.
Oh, I got it, I can show it here. It's right here. Just went by it. Find it where it says remove. To be removed, right across that angle apart.
Yeah, that's under existing conditions. Right, I was looking at it under the new plan.
I, I didn't see anything there under the new plan.
No.
So, what he's talking about is, is the fence that they don't own.
All right, Chris, are you?
I was just going to, where, where is the septic you're, you're getting Department of Health, um, permit for? Yeah. For, for the CVS, where, where is that going to go? I thought it was, the, the septic was going to go where the liquor store is now.
It is.
It is. So, in other words, I don't have the.
So, you're going to temporarily tie into the other plaza?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it was planned a little crazy, but CVS is here, the, the new CVS septic system is planned for right up here, which is within the footprint of the East Gate Liquor.
Okay.
As part of the phasing process, we will be looking for a temporary connection to the existing.
Right. I just thought it was early to get a permit for that when the building's still standing there. Obviously, it's got to be, you can't do soil testing.
Digging holes in the middle of the building, yeah.
Yeah, it can be kind of tough. So, I, I, I'm not saying you're not doing the right thing, I'm just, I, it's just kind of, for me, it's, how do you soil test when you can't get there because there's a building sitting on top of it?
We tested around the.
The perimeter?
Perimeter, worked it out with the water help.
I know, you're going to be removing all the concrete and stuff, so you're going to be down probably four feet anyways?
Yes.
Okay. It's going to be a lot of fill.
Yes.
You good, Chris, now?
Yeah, there's still some questions on the, the, the Butters.
Yeah, the Butters, we're going to get into it.
The Butters, okay.
Just, I'll be quick. Thank you for moving those dumpsters. I do agree they're kind of tight in that corner, but at least the drive-through has great sightlines.
Yeah.
I can visualize myself going around there, not having to worry about a vehicle. Going to the photometrics in the northwest corner where there's absolutely no light, you know, I'm looking at the employees of this place having to go out at five o'clock at night to throw trash, and they have no light. I understand that the residents don't want the light, but with LED lights set properly, I think we can get some light back there and increase the safety of the employees at, at the, at the building, even if it's light poles on the far east or the west side and shadowing them in.
Wall packs.
Or wall packs with, with an angle down. There's just some kind of lighting out there, there's, there's nothing there.
I can't believe there's no light.
Again, point noted, again, we're just trying to be sensitive to the concerns of the residents back there with lighting, we do not want to do any water, it was currently being practiced today, and, you know, take no exception to evaluate your point a little bit of, of light back there.
Let me just make a quick comment, you know, I think probably, you're going to have a pretty high fence back there, the noise fence, eight foot tall.
Eight foot, yes.
So, if you were to put a wall pack seven feet up, the, the, the shield on that wall pack would be a foot below the top of the fence, so you'd light everything below that and nothing above it. So, I think the real key here is the placement, the elevation placement of that wall pack. I think you could put one back there, would solve, would do what he wanted, what he's talking about, and you wouldn't, and none of it would spill because your, your lip would be below the top of the fence. I think that's the most practical way to address it.
To, to put it right, to, to, just above the door, the frame of the door.
Yeah, yeah, if, if you're looking for safety, because that will provide the light for footing and basically what he's talking about with no spill.
Building's at eighty.
Are we looking, just so I'm clear, I, I understand the area, but the dumpsters, are we also looking for the entire?
Yep.
Length of the small store.
Minimal, minimal lighting, just enough to, you know, in the same kind of scenario, after, whenever they close, the lights go off, just, just to give a little safety back there for the employees.
And again, keeping them low in the building will eliminate any spill. They won't even see them. Okay, Joe, you have anything?
No, I'm all set.
Stop.
I like the placement of the dumpster, but I had a concern also about the lighting in the back, about there not being any, which seems way too dark.
Yeah, I, I, it's not that the lighting, it's the kind of lighting.
As long as it's done properly.
Yeah.
You know, it won't affect the neighbors and.
They won't even see them.
You know, people being out there at nighttime, it's not going to be very, it's going to be dark without it.
And they're going to be out there.
The, the lights in the front corner over by the animal, whatever the place is over there, you know, those are existing poles that, they could probably adjust the heads.
They're going to, they're going to replace all the heads though, John.
But they're going to have to because they're going to do LED heads anyway to match the other LED heads.
But what I'm, what I was basically saying is, is he didn't calculate them with what he's going to put in there. He's given us what he's got today, and we didn't ask for what today is. We asked what it's going to be.
What he probably did was take the existing poles that are there and put the LED head on, which, that's, this is what you get.
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, so, you know.
Yeah, but we needed what it, it's going to be, you know, final, without spillage.
That is what's going to be final.
Well, no, we don't want any spillage, so he has to shield it. It's a shieldable light, I'm sure.
Yeah.
They're all shieldable, and they can shield it, that's right on the property line, and I know they can shield it right down on the property line.
You could shield it, but if the pole, if the existing pole is a certain height, you can only shield it so much.
So, twelve foot pole, how tall is the pole?
How tall are those poles?
No, the existing pole is twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I think you'd have to have a shield that went under and blocked, well, you'd have to turn the light off pretty much.
You'd be surprised with those lights.
I, I think you're asking for a lot for an existing, existing pole that's there. See if you can shield it any better way, but I, I don't.
Okay.
We did it, we did it over here.
You all set?
Right down to the.
So, um. We have a couple of letters from Butters, have you been provided with copies of the Butters letters that we have?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I, I received a staff letter, oh, I did receive, sorry, I did receive a letter from Nancy, she had for, just came in Friday, the last week. That's what just came in today for.
Okay, I don't see.
No, 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 I had an email from Danielle.
Oh, I had.
Summarizing conversation.
Yeah, after we spoke, I summarized all the points because we were waiting for a letter, and then the letter came in on, I guess, Friday, and then that letter got distributed, but I don't think you actually saw a copy of the letter.
Yeah, to clarify the chairman's question, no, I haven't received it, but I did receive a summary letter from Danielle Friday, addressed a conversation between Danielle and.
Okay, and so Danielle, you provided him with all of the issues in the pages, C one and C two and all that?
I'm sorry?
You provided him with a breakdown of what's in these, this letter?
I hadn't actually seen the letter. I, we had a conversation over the phone, I summarized what the issues were, I guess the letter did come in, I didn't even realize, I, the letter's in the Dropbox, but I wasn't in the office when the letter came in, so, I just, I guess we should go through each of the issues in the letter.
Well, we can do that, I, before I open it up to the public, I thought that we would go through these couple of letters because they may answer a lot of the questions for people right up front, might make things a little easier. So, I'm just, so let's, I'm going to deal with the first letter quickly, and this is, I'm not going to get into any great detail, but, uh, just the concerns, it's actually from Three Burditt Road, it's, my concerns are as follows, the disruption of the wetland property will cause more flooding on my property than I normally get. Excuse me, as discussed at the neighborhood meeting on December eighth, I do not have a stockade fence, will one be put up along the end of Burditt Road and continue to Park Street, or will it be left after construction and be maintained? Also extend the eight-foot sound barrier fencing behind my property as it is being installed behind the other Burditt Road properties, and I think that's the point that Chris made.
With respect to, I think, I think that was the comment from Three Burditt Road.
Yes.
Couple things, one is the noise attenuation fence will be installed across the entire length of Three Burditt Road, that, that is shown on the plan.
Okay.
With respect to drainage, there will be no, we have, the drainage has been peer reviewed by, by Tom, like, the consultant, the findings of that report have indicated the methodologies and conclusions that we have, we have come to will result in that there be no irreparable damage to a water source downstream, downstream, downstream of residents. We are required, as part of a previous private application to, as part of this renovation, is create a fifty-six hundred square foot wetland mitigation area, that mitigation area is in this area location. Just have, will have no impact of increased flooding, water issues associated with, with Three Burditt Road. Again, just to reiterate that, this comment came up again at conservation commission here in January, at that point, we did receive a peer reviewed letter that confirms that everything's been designed towards not only Tom Redding's stormwater policy standards, but also Matt Steepe's stormwater policy standards with no detrimental impacts to the surrounding areas.
Okay, thank you. A lot of times people don't understand how detailed some of these designs are and how much thought goes into them, and, but I, and so I do want to say that if after this is built, if there's a problem where an increased amount of water for some reason does happen, could certainly let us know and we would ask you to come back and re, and re-look at it.
Absolutely.
And, and just so everybody have a level of comfort that, that you're not going to walk away, this is going to be here, and if, if it doesn't work the way it's supposed to work, there will be mitigation of it.
Look, we're not likely waiting, Mr. Giannucci's on the property.
Yes, I know.
CVS is here, so I, we're in the intersection.
I know John's gone to a lot of trouble to make sure this is right, you know, to make sure this is good, and, and, and we hope it all works well for him, it's, it's nice for North Reading to have a new building and have it look good, so, we appreciate it. Okay, the second meeting, the second, a letter from, about her has a number of things on it. What I'm going to do is, I'm just going to read probably three of them, and then we'll discuss them, and then we'll do three more because there's a number of items, that way we don't get too bogged down in trying to remember what we had. It says the demolition plan states existing stockade fence is to be removed, it was agreed on the, that the stockade fence would remain during and after the construction, the fence would be maintained by Lucci Realty Trust, and fencing would be, be placed by three fifty-seven Park Street and three Burditt Road during and remain after. Now, they're talking about stockade fence here.
And the, the comment refers to when, when the comments came up about the noise, the noise attenuation fence and the construction in the back, one of the, one of the scenarios that I was looking at, the feasibility was, is maintaining the existing stockade fence, do the filling of the drainage ditch, and install the noise attenuation fence five feet off the proposed curb line. Those were one of the scenarios that we were looking at. The more I got into thinking about construction means and methods, and the more I evaluated feasibility of maintaining that fence is, it can't be maintained, it's going to come down, only because the, the area is heavily vegetated, so all the trees need to be cut down, the roots need to be pulled, and as you pull the roots, you're going to pull the fence down. So, in light of that scenario, and the grading is such that they need the entire width of the green space to, to, to grade that area to fill the ditch in, the means and methods and the approach changed a little bit where we decided that it made much more practical. the means and methods and the approach changed a little bit, where we decided that it made much more practical sense to put the noise attenuation fence, have that act as the noise attenuation fence slash stockade fence. It is a wood fence, one by six, piled upon the neighbor's side, and the insulation, foam insulation, and then there'll be a back to it, so the neighbors will get the good side of that fence. And that achieves the same purpose as a stockade fence does. It provides a visual barrier, yet we have a noise foam in the middle. And then we supplemented that by, as the grading comes up to the site, the staggered roll of albatites would act as a visual barrier as well. So, we tried to maintain it, we, we could not. However, we do understand that we are sensitive that this is the residential area. So, an understanding, one of the first stages of construction is going to be to do the activity back here. So during construction, we are proposing, or showing on the plans, that there will be a temporary six-foot channeling fence installed along the grid to keep the residential, the children within the residential area from usually the shortcut they get to the mall, they get themselves into, they'll get, attempt to get further on site. So we, the plan is to have a temporary channeling fence up during construction. Once the area has been, the ditch has been filled in, the area has been reprated, we would then install the noise attenuation fence. We would five-grade the area with lawn and seed, we would five-grade the area with lawn, seed it, and then plant the trees, and then work in board, in, in board from there. So, to, to address that comment, yes, there was an evaluation process where we did consider trying to save the existing fence. But construction means and methods and practicality, it, it's, it's not going to, it's not gonna survive, so we mixed it.
Okay, and the other, so the next comment was, our fencing is gone from the plan, but I think you've addressed all that.
Yes.
Okay, traffic flow. It looks like Park Street, Main Street entrances follow one way between the new CVS and existing building. No note of arrows showing either way behind the buildings. No signage that says trucks entering one way. Also, new on the plan is the loading area for liquor store. Which way do these trucks come in?
The, the, as mentioned previously, we were planning a self-tenor, you know, clockwise direction. So, the bigger delivery trucks will enter enough the Park Street, this curb cut, they'll take a left travel along the side of CVS and then towards the way CVS is designated loading area is in this location. And then if, if it's the liquor store, one of the comments that we got from previous meeting was that they would like to see the loading area delineated for the expansion area associated with the liquor store. So that's what we have proposed here. We have striped it such that, there's a, again, a solid white edge line to kind of delineate the travelway all the way around the, from the building, and then it'll leave things in there towards Main Street.
Okay. It says, an eight-foot-high noise fencing is noted, but it does not show that the fencing will continue onto Kingston Street and Park Street as suggested at the meeting.
Yes, we're proposed, again, with respect to the noise, yeah, the fencing was planned along the entire length of the red property. We did propose some evergreen buffering for the property of three sixty-seven. We've heard tonight comments about extending it, it's contingent or extending that fence down. Noted, need to evaluate that.
Okay.
However, along the north side, which is, I believe, Kingston Road side, yeah, the area, we are, we're not proposing any land disturbances within this portion of the drainage basin to remain. It is heavily vegetated, there's, there's, I believe there's a fence up there right now. So, it didn't make sense to go in to more clear, clearing and rubbing to try to get the noise attenuation fence in. We want to leave that its natural state, and really do more policing on site to minimize and mitigate the, the noise that is, if they're currently experiencing, is to mitigate it on site with due diligence with, with, I can't think, trash, time, quarantine times on trash, and snow removal operations and the like. I just think that, again, it's, it's heavily vegetated, again, the trees, I mean, try to install an eight-foot fence. In this area is gonna require additional tree cutting and whatnot to, to occur. And to me, I think policing may be the easier way to go, and then if that doesn't work, is, is aggressive as a long-term, going forward, once we get a better understanding as to what the specific problem is.
Okay. It says, landscape plan shows Fraser fir's in between the albatites. That was not what was agreed to on, at our meeting. All albatites were to be used.
Yeah, again, just a little bit of flavor to mix up a little bit if that's, if it's all albatites, and that's more, we'll make the change.
Well, again, this is, this letter says that there was an agreement that that's what would happen.
Well, the request was the green rule of albatites, and the majority of them are. We just kinda broke species up a little bit to.
What is the difference between the albatite and the Fraser fir, as far as noise or, or visual?
To be honest with you, it's just a visual thing. I, I, I'm not the expert.
It's prettier, it's prettier with the, with the variation, you think?
It is worn, but the, the hulas will grow four feet a year, two to four feet a year. They grow really fast. So what they put in there, they'll be, by the time they're done construction with the liquor store, they'll be two feet taller. You know, and I'm not, you know, maybe you do put some, some in there, but drop down the number of trees and give a, make sure you got a decent. It's always good to put a variety of trees in, because if something comes in and kills one, it doesn't kill them all. Same as what's in your parking lot. You know, we always use those same trees, and you get a blight that, a plate that comes in, a blight that comes in, and you lose them all. You look at the Dutch elms, and you can look at the chestnuts.
We, we take notes after the chairman involved, so.
Okay. So, it says on page sixteen, the truck circulation plan shows the truck on Park Street to swing onto the curb cut. To do this, it shows the truck going in, going left into traffic on Park Street to make the turn and driving on the side of traffic coming in the other direction.
Yeah, I think the comment is, is that.
If you get a full-size tractor trailer with a fifty-three-foot trailer on it.
Yeah, fifty-foot trailer, yeah, that's.
Gonna have to make that.
The roadway geometry, that's what does today, that's what's doing tomorrow, and that's what's gonna do in the future. This shopping center's no different than any other shopping center.
Well, the trucks coming down Main Street, making the turn onto, onto Park Street there, headed for Concombre Street, they have to get in the left-hand lane to make the right-hand turn. Because there's a, there's a double lane coming east and only a single lane going west, so they need to take the entire roadway to make that turn. So, I mean, that happens right now, and I think that's what they're seeing, but I don't, I don't know what you could do about that, since that's the configuration of the state road.
Yeah, it's a, it's a roadway geometrics, there's no, there's nothing really you can do about it. It's a condition that exists with, with any of those delivery trucks along that corridor that, to come in. Although the model is, you know, that's what this is, it's a simulated model, it is a fifty-three-foot long truck, so, you know, the truck driver does, whatever truck that, wait for the traffic to pass and go for a quick second approach, make the turn in, and then off these, off these go.
So, the last, the last item is, in between CVS and AutoZone, it shows a one-way drive-through and entry. Will, will there be signs for right turn only or for trucks only in one way? Clarify the in-and-out traffic pattern of trucks. It seems it would make sense to enter and leave from the same exit on Main Street, not the curb cut. I think what they're saying is that, that, that southern in, entrance on Main Street would make, be the best place for them to come in and out. I think that's what they're indicating there.
The, it would be, it would, if they were traveling north on Main Street, if the delivery truck was traveling north on Main Street, then I would tend to agree with you that make this left turn in the site will be, is, is, is a lot easier. CVS's loading facility is in this corner, so it's difficult for CVS delivery trucks to cut the head and try to, they cannot make this left turn.
Yeah, yeah.
Cannot make that right turn. That's why we're proposing Park Street. And since we're proposing Park Street for that, we just thought it'd be more fluid that, again, kept everything in clockwise direction, and one will, will return, turn that the oversized delivery trucks, the new noise Park Street, it minimizes all those conflicts.
Yep.
If you start making zigzag turns, if they can't, even if I use this one, can't cross the front there, the situation still occurs. Try to get the right turn for CVS to one.
You'll have to run.
It's gonna flip the building, or it's gonna flip the parking and whatnot, and create some friction with the other.
Most people don't realize that the driver has much better vision of his left side of his truck and where it's going than he does of the right. So, he's got a better opportunity to make a clean turn, making that left-hand turn coming in from the curb cut. So that's the last item that's on that. So what I'm gonna do now is open it to the public for a question and comment. Please state your name and address when you, before you ask a question, and direct all questions to the chair. So, do I have any questions or comments? I hope that what we did leading up to this answered as many of the questions as we could, as possible for you. So, if you have any questions. Yes, ma'am.
Nancy, I'm a person, I'm from Red Hat Road. So, Fraser fir trees that you was putting between on the plan, we really don't want fir trees.
Okay.
We want all albatites. We've had a lot of fir trees. And are there gonna be those bales of hay up against this channeling fence for added protection for erosion or drainage or whatever, like you see during construction?
We will have an erosion control valley around the perimeter of, of the property, yes. It'll, it won't be hay bales, what now is, it's a compost. There's a mulch and sock, and it's biodegradable, that's like in a construction, what we do is we cut, if it doesn't break down, if the sheeting doesn't break down, it's cut and the mulch is spread along, along the, those.
So, to be clear on the fencing, the eight-foot sound barrier fence is now gonna be where the old stockade fence is?
It's gonna be closer, it's gonna be a foot onto John's property. We'll have eight-foot sound barrier fence. Will be one foot inside John Lucci's property, and along the entire length of, from three, right now, the plan shows to be three seventeen.
Okay, is it gonna come around three to cover three fifty-seven?
That's, we need to evaluate that.
Sorry, ma'am, you have to state your name.
Cafe's day off, fifty-seven Park Street.
Okay.
And we have a neighborhood meeting, that means he had assured us that the fence would come down, particularly behind three fifty-seven. And it's not, it's not.
That, that, I've noticed, I've heard a couple of comments, and we'll, we'll go back and evaluate.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Janice, around fifty, Red Hat Road. Um, I was wondering if you determined what the, the sound barrier fence is, uh, will, in the.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a wood product. It's going to be eight-foot sections on the entire, four-by-four pressure treated post on the residence side. If it's a one-by-six pine, or it'll be a two-by-four, two, two rows of two-by-fours on the backside. And in between the two-by-fours, there's gonna be a two-inch foam panel insulation. And then that will be covered with a half, a, a sheeting product.
So it's actually absorb more sun than regular one, yeah?
Right, and then what you'll have is, you'll have, if you're looking, if your back is towards the plaza, it'll be, if, if your back is towards the plaza, and you're looking towards the residence, towards your backyard, what you'll see is you'll have a driveway, and you're gonna have a row of, a staggered roll of evergreen trees, and then you're gonna have a eight-foot-high noise attenuation fence.
And then you want a question? On top of the, where, where they're gonna add it to that bump out, you know, the existing CVS, where they're gonna put the liquor store in? Why do they have to, why do they have to bump that up?
The space right now is currently too small to accommodate the needs of the liquor store, so they need to, they need to expand.
So, is that gonna bump out as much as the back wall does to the left of that, if you're looking from this side? The existing building, nine AutoZone, sticks out further towards the back of, like, to my property?
The new CVS.
No, Leo.
That's the new CVS.
The existing building, you know, existing?
The yellow building, I'm sorry. Yes, if I understand your question correctly, it's, it's, there will be an addition of the back of the existing building by thirty-two feet. So it's gonna be, there's gonna be a piece of a building, thirty-two by ninety, thirty by ninety, that's, that's closer to the property line of this there.
Is it, will that make a, well, it's still gonna be further than the bump out? Then how are they gonna move through? How are the vehicles down there?
Well, you, there is, we have, we have an access drive that we, we obstructed, so.
Twenty-four feet.
Delivery trucks will have this whole access drive in there to travel. The, the receiving area for the liquor store is, is inboard along this side of the building, so they'll, the delivery truck will travel over the north, back into the space right here, but this will be unpeated access, and there will be no conflicts, open drive.
Back there, right, it's gonna be, right, so that's, yeah, that's right.
It's a little.
Are they gonna leave the, the tractor trailers back in there?
I don't know too much of it.
Well, they have a downgrade that they back into now, and they keep.
They have a trailer back there. I'm not sure what the final operation.
And are they gonna settle there on it? Can there be something done with the trucks running?
My get, well, that's something that we can control. That's an operational issue that, that, again, as John is the owner, can mandate the liquor store manager that when trucks come in, it's a little prodigious. But if you, it's any, any attempts, any, that's an operational issue that can be dealt with between John and specific tenant. One, one's saying, when you have a limit, you shut down your, 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 you know, it's not even just the normal, you know, like, yes, understood.
Well, they actually, in this state, there's an anti-idling law. They shouldn't, they're not supposed to idle for more than five minutes. So, if, if there is a noise complaint, the, the police department will come down and do something about it.
So, and, the, you said they're gonna tie in the subject to the existing one temporarily?
Yes.
Do you know how long that would be for? Because don't they have problems with the existing subject in that CVS?
I am not aware of any subject, subject issues at the site. We did do soil testing for the location where the new CVS is going. Monster showed this excellent material, it's like leaf sand, a lot can be held in the hole.
My question was, how long will we be tied in?
No, approximately a four months, a four month duration.
And they don't have to waste the existing one for the other property, you know, that?
No, the existing system, as, as we understand it, and it's been inspected, is functioning, functioning as designed.
I thought they had problems.
I'm not aware of any problems.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? John in the back.
Tom Slumney, Nine Bridget Road. My concern, my concern is with the delivery truck, truck, pack. You've addressed pretty much everything coming around with the CVS, back at CVS thirty years. You have one more minor problem, and that would be the, the AutoZone store, they deliver right at that corner, between, between the two buildings. Right there. They're delivering, they deliver right here, and it's a trailer truck every time. With all due respect, sir, CVS can have their FedEx and, and UPS trucks deliver here. This is liquor store, these are big trailer trucks that come around here.
Right.
Okay, they come around this way, that's fine. They exit which way from here?
They're exiting from on this way, down this way.
And out through here?
Yes.
And, Mr. Perry, your concern was having this backed up at center here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Trailer truck coming down through here, and it's gonna be a disaster. Just, just pointing out.
Who's the other one, Tom?
The confluence.
Who's that one?
Well, they can exit here too, and if you don't think they're gonna come through here to go this way, go north, that's crazy. They will, we got this. My other concern would be, this is great and everything else, where you gonna put the snow?
We have, we have snow designated areas on the plan, again, the plan would be to snow, snow some of the snow in this area, but not push it all the way down back.
Right.
There'll also be snow stores, no one, there's handcaps here, and it's, it's on the wind, and we got to, we get the sun typically as it's light, so we keep, we hope.
The other thing is, a lot of these stores, for instance, Mario's doesn't close until eleven, if I'm not mistaken, so the employees. So the employees get into these dumpsters, that's gonna be quite a trip for them to get down around here. The trucks are there sometimes at five-thirty in the morning. I, we live right behind them, but at five-thirty in the morning, I think I'm back. To police that, you call the police, by the time they come and everything else, it's pretty much taken care of. I mean, we don't wanna be calling the police every fifteen minutes, or every hour, or whatever, you know, they really have enough to do. So, as far as the truck patents are concerned, that's fine, it's just that, it's, it's, that's gonna be difficult. It's gonna be very noisy, and, and the traffic patterns are gonna be tough, they're gonna be real tough.
Well, who's to say a truck's not gonna go in on?
Exactly, you, you with signage, they're not, they're not gonna pay much.
I think the signage is an important part of it, and I, and that point was made, so I think that some, the signage, but I, but I also think that because this redevelopment is happening of this property, it gives us an opportunity to address the issues you're bringing up, otherwise you would have no forum for it. So, we're gonna take advantage of this to try to talk to the owner and, and see if we can't make sure that the, the scheduled deliveries are done in such a way that don't impact you, because now we know about it, which we didn't really know before, so, so.
In addition, I'm sorry, in addition to that, the dumpsters sometimes, I've been, I, I, when I worked at the fire department in Sanibel, I was up sometimes at five o'clock in the morning. At five fifteen, they were over there banging the dumpsters, it was crazy. I actually went over and, and told them, you can't do this, you're not supposed to be seven o'clock.
And we've run into that before in other places and solved that problem, then the complaints on the way. So again, this is an opportunity for us to ask that those things, 'cause sometimes, John may not even know what, what the schedules are for those, because he's dealing with other things, and the owners of these companies, these businesses that are here are dealing with their dumpster guy. We just have to make sure the communication goes all the way through, so they know that their dumpster guy can't come at five in the morning, he's gonna come at seven or later. So, so this is the opportunity, so, so it's been brought up, it's on record, we have it recorded, and we'll make sure, and gives us an opportunity to make sure something, some kind of a schedule is adhered to.
Everybody that's here from the neighborhood, we're not against progress, and, you know, making profit and everything else, but, keep at what cost?
Well, you know, again.
Quality of life, it changed, most of us have been here for a long time. And we moved away from somebody, someplace that was a lot more urgent than what's happening here.
Right.
So, just looking up.
Well, that's why we're having these, this meeting, that's why we're trying to address these things. John, you had a comment, please, please?
Please, I just wanted the neighbors to know that we did send letters, certified receipt requested from every one of the tenants notifying town ordinances with regard to deliveries and with trash pickups. And also, we took here a peace gate, and I wanna make sure our people move at the same time. In addition, you know, we, we posted the signs, but the signs only means, they only mean so much. But the owners of each one of these stores need to know when they can get the deliveries, and that their neighbors, that, that, we have to be aware of their needs.
So as you can see, there's a response already to this, he's already beginning to deal with it. So, basically, if, if something happens that's not right, if you let him know, he will go to that particular owner and say, you're not adhering to the rules. So you'll have it from both ends, so thank you, John, for that.
We do have his phone now.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any comments or questions on this?
Same, Janice, ground fifteen, redneck. When you were talking about the traffic and everybody talking about the traffic coming in, where the dumpsters are, I don't know. A few days ago, there was like, after the snowstorm, like CBS truck, trailer, and like that. And three food trucks at the same time trying to go to Mario's, and you got one coming, and they're all, they're all in there trying to get in, and they can't, and they're backing up and turning around, and it was like this big traffic. Because my yard is right behind.
Well, there's a, it's a, it's twenty-four feet wide there back there, which is basically wide enough for the two trucks to pass each other. Now, the only thing that would inhibit that.
The dumpsters, it's not a problem.
No, the dumpsters aren't a problem, but the snow, if the snow wasn't properly removed, but that's, that, that would be a temporary situation. Just like you wouldn't wanna be driving on the highways when they get three or four inches of snow there, because you're gonna have an accident, so you stay off. And that would be dealt with in a reasonable amount of time generally, so.
But no, my, my point, I guess, is if they're gonna make it more narrow, if people don't go in the direction they're gonna go in, they're gonna be.
I think there's probably gonna be a point of education where the delivery people are educated by the stores that they're delivering to, that they need to adhere to these particular traffic patterns, and I think that will happen, and once they get it, they'll get it, so. They're gonna get regular deliveries from the same people all the time, and so, once they get it, they'll get it. It's like any new traffic pattern, have you been to the Rotary down in Wakefield?
Yeah.
Anyway, how long do you think it's gonna take us to get that one right? So, um, that's a, that's clearly, that's clearly a good example.
Fix that.
Yeah, okay, but, but I think this is much simpler than that, and I think they'll get it much quicker.
It just needs to be adjusted, because they weren't thinking.
Jim, just a couple of comments and.
Steve O'Leary, board of selectmen.
Just a couple of comments or questions. First of all, I want to acknowledge Mr. Lucci and the CBS and all the team for their willingness to be in the neighborhoods earlier on subsequently to address the issues sooner rather than later. Pretty good job, yeah. But my question to some of the boardists from the earlier meeting, it was, some people were in the question of, would be basically two fences, you know, one, the sound fence up high, you have the building, and then the lower one would be either replaced or maintained. Let's, planning to complete, apparently that's not gonna be the case now, is correct?
It was looked at, yes.
It was looked at? It was looked at, and the neighbors okay with what it proposed, as far as, the eight-foot fence is pretty good, again, that was a great proposal as far as, you know, sights out. But there was a certain couple of, as far as the dual fencing from a road control standpoint and additional sound fence, but that's not gonna happen. The neighbors okay with being proposed, and it's a lot of play, it's, it's a little more back down.
I like, I like the idea of the two fencings and then the description of the trees in between, it just sounded perfect. And if it's not feasible, you know, with all the digging, I can understand that.
Question two is.
Mike Lozai.
Okay. Good, could you say your name for the record, please?
Mike Lozai, five redneck road.
Okay.
When, when we originally talked about this, when we get out the two fence situation, the high spot cave, that's the eight-foot, was gonna be up on a higher elevation. But that now is.
Right.
Now, it's coming back down to where.
Yes. The discussion that we had was, we were looking at the feasibility of trying to, since we had an existing fence already in place, we're trying to maintain and keep it, and then we would have the noise barrier fence a couple of feet off the curb line. That was the original discussions that we had, when we were looking into and evaluating the feasibility. The more we started, I started putting means and methods to construction, I quickly came to the conclusion that where the trees have to come down and cut, and the leaves have, the stumps have to be pulled, it's gonna pull the fence down, so I.
I understand that, yeah.
So I agree with you.
Well, once again, I'm just looking at elevation of that fence.
That's my question, my question is. Where's the, what was originally talked about? Is, is, how about the height elevation is gonna be involved with the building, is, or the, the party here? How far, how much further down, what's the drop in the elevation? You know, the fencing, from the eight-foot being right two feet off the curb, as opposed to what you proposed? You know, it's probably a three or four foot drop, right?
There's a, there is a four-foot draw between, there's a four-foot elevation, there's a gray here and a gray at the back.
So your eight-foot fence is really gonna drop four feet from what was originally talked about in the neighborhood meeting?
Well, we talked about, well, we did talk about eight-foot fence in the neighborhood meeting, we talked about two, two fences, maintain the fence.
No, you tried, not as an eight.
No, we didn't talk about an eight-foot fence, because we're talking about, you know, headlight, we're talking about deliveries, we're talking about light from the building, and again, which would allow for some lighting on the back of the building, which does apparently exist as a safety factor for employees and the locals. We talked about eight-foot fence, you know, the sound and the light standpoint, that would have been pretty satisfying, pretty satisfying. So now, as you're dropping it down four feet, the impact of it is minimized for both the sound and the visibility standpoint. And I'm just putting this up based upon, I'd like to, they, whatever works, whether it's green one, or green one. Again, from a road standpoint, over the years, they've had a problem, less of a problem lately, but, it's, they just like two barriers is better than one. As well as sound barriers, trees and sound barriers, it's two fences. So if you, if you're gonna drop this thing down four feet, you know, basically what you have is a four-foot barrier.
For the curb. Four feet less.
Four feet less.
The fence will be higher.
Curbs are too close.
Are they satisfied?
I have to listen in to you.
I know he was gonna screw that right up.
There's a significant difference in elevation from the two feet off the curb fence down with the existing fences. You're now talking about putting this new fence, eight-foot fence, where the existing fence is. So, and right now, they have what, the six, six foot, they gotta, they gotta pick up two feet.
Five, seven.
Right, that big house, we've got a little bit of two feet, you're picking up, you're picking up two feet from what apparently, apparently exists, but significantly less than what was talked about, proposed and considered.
Yeah, it was discussed.
Discussed, they discussed and considered.
Hey, the more we get into it, the, yeah, the more logic.
So if, if you were to, to take a look at what we had discussed, putting the eight-foot fence two feet off the curb, and what we discussed that night too, was snow removal. Part of the snow removal process in the back of the building, you did have to move it away. And now what you're doing, you're providing yourself more opportunity to clear the area behind the building in between there and where the fence is being proposed. But you were talking about remove the snow removal, just taking it up a bit, you're really, you're putting it out front.
That's correct.
That's not what you're proposing now.
Correct.
So, if you were to go back to what was discussed, and go with the eight-foot fence, two feet off the curb, you have a snow removal issue, but you also have a more significant barrier for these people. Put your, your plantings in, and if you don't wanna go with the second fence, it certainly appears, so they would expand their backyard a little bit more, enjoy the foliage, and the trees, the upper bides, they're just suggesting as opposed to the second fence. That's just one.
Okay, to your point, you're, you're absolutely correct, but the flip to that is, I guess my logic was, I was listening to the concerns during construction, about children, when they were trespassing, and, and yes, that if, if we decide that we wanna relocate the noise barrier fence to being three feet off the back of the curb, it kind of, it kind of created that situation where now there is no protection on that, we have property on all the different trees.
But you're talking, you're talking about a temporary fence there anyways, what you're proposing.
For construction, that will be, that will be taken down, so I'm talking post-construction, you know, operating.
So we're talking post-construction, you're not playing a new, two, two fences, or maintaining the current fence and putting up the, as previously discussed. So what you're talking about is moving proposed fence down, down four feet. Yeah, the impact of that is, is less significant than, than what was initially discussed. Again, from a safety standpoint, I would imagine that, you know, the temporary fence is gonna be a temporary fence, that happens, that'll go. You know, and if the compromise is, is moving that proposed fence further east to back the building, up higher, you have a more significant impact on that, a positive effect. They just have the plantings without the second fence, that's, that's what, you gotta decide which way you're going, you don't, you're going both ways necessarily.
No, I'm glad, I'm thrilled you brought that up, Steve, because we didn't, I didn't picture it all.
We're not gonna gain. We need the second, we need two fences.
But anyway, so, again, I, I wasn't sure, based upon what I was hearing tonight, and everybody was visualizing what was being proposed, and what the impact was.
Right on top of the curb.
It's better than what they have, because it's two feet higher than what they have. It's a better quality fence from a soundproofing and whatever standpoint, but it's not what was discussed.
So, so you're saying our backyard's gonna be like wall back, upper bides, then the fence?
You're gonna do backyard, there are upper bides, and then if they, if they're going up, the no going, going up to an eight-foot fence.
That's acceptable, I mean.
See, that's acceptable to have, no. So that's acceptable, yes, that's more acceptable to Michael, and probably, if you really think about it, probably most everybody.
Didn't you just say it wasn't gonna be eight feet?
No, it's still an eight-foot fence, it's just a question of where they planted. It's either up here or four feet off.
Okay, um, let's, uh.
But the other, other question I have, aside from the fence, was, is there gonna be some sort of interaction between the developers and the Mass Highway in relation to the traffic flow in the intersection?
Yeah.
Has it, has it been?
Uh, no, um, the, the reference to that is, Mass Highway won't entertain curb cut permanent application until we secure our land use permits at the local level, so.
We're also talking about maybe potentially some modifications from the intersection, which is there, that you get involved with based upon the development.
Right, that, that all gets started with a curb cut permanent application, where it was prepared an application, we submit a traffic report and our improvements, plan improvements to the curb cut, that goes into Mass DOT, then that gets a review, that's where that evaluation process starts. But I can't stop that process and like, paying the permits from the planning board on site level view and the border conditions from conservation, which we will not accept an application.
Thank you, I just wanna clarify things to the commission's benefit, as to where, my impression was, how we may, may be at, and where we at today. And I wanted to get some sort of feedback from the neighbors as to, do they understand the same with that, basically, four foot short.
We kind of understand that.
Any effect of that. It's better than what they have, but it isn't what was discussed. And I understand from an operational standpoint, it should, it would be much easier from an operational standpoint to have, or will be, I believe, to move some snow around, you know, for the two, three months you need it. The impact of the neighborhood, it's fully discussed, and the impact was, concerns were expressed, and, um, consider.
Hey, Warren.
Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, Mr. Salami actually seems to have a good thought about coming around the, the north end of the building there. I'm looking at your, at your roadway in the truck route, you're gonna, you're gonna jump the end island, that concrete, uh, end there. And same when you come back up, you're gonna jump another one, right at a light, actually, one of your roadway lights. Well, the ladder truck in a, in a, in a fifty-three-foot truck doesn't run any better. I'm on six, on the C sixteen.
Twenty-two foot truck in a fifty-three foot box. That's a long truck.
Yeah, those are striped, those are striped areas.
Yeah, I think maybe, there's no curving there?
No, just a striped back. They're all different, they're just.
All, all striped, they're changed.
They're all changed.
That's a light, already.
That's a sight like, oh, yes, yeah.
You should put some around that one.
And it'll be followed, uh, there'll be a base that's sticking out.
We had talked about putting the bike here, the hyper up here.
We evaluated, yes, so maybe to, maybe move it.
You got plenty of parking, maybe move two more, maybe, or one, to make it safer there.
We can look at that.
I'm just, you know, you had a good point, so I looked at it again, coming out of there was, was the question, 'cause it's kinda narrow right there.
Yeah, there's a pinch point right at the curb, at the corner, that's.
Right, right, okay. All right, I didn't realize, it was just striping, I thought it was, I thought it was raised concrete.
Uh, no.
Ends, okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Jim, just in relation to the lighting on the back of the building, you know, you were talking about they're putting seven-foot height, I was assuming it was an eight-foot fence, two feet off the curb, but four feet down, the visual doubt with the neighbors is gonna be, again, my may not spill over into the yard.
Should be a post, that's all.
Last issue, so he is, as far as, what you can see, was really spilling into the yard. Apparently, they don't have, they're laying the back of the building, spilling into the yard. And if from a safety standpoint, that's what you're looking for, eight-foot fence, so it's two feet off the curb, would more appropriately address the ability to light the back of the building from a safety standpoint, but not have a visual, I think, that they're handling it, or looking at.
I guess the only point I have for that is two, two-fold, one is that the optics of the LEDs recessed within the fixture itself, so you won't be seeing the actual light fixture or bulbs themselves, that light will be directed downward. And number two is, we do have staggered roll of lightings for the fence that will again enhance screening of, of these wall packs. And I'm envisioning, I mean, we have three. And I'm envisioning, I mean, we have three, CVS should probably have six on the total back of the other store, and we can position the trees such that to maximize those, that screening of those fixtures in those areas such that, uh, there is no, um, impact to the neighbors. And should there be, you know, at the end when the planting is finished and there is a gap, we can always add, you know, additional landscape albaty's to further enhance what we repositioned also that we, uh, could gain maximum coverage and, uh, deflection, screen of those fixtures, uh, from the residents.
I apologize, Mr. Jim, but how far off from the curb are the plantings proposed?
We have a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer, so we have that total twenty-five feet to work.
But do you also have to leave some roof over, do you wish us now?
Well, this, yeah, there'll be a five-foot, there's going to be, you know, a five-foot shelf along, a five-foot flat area to handle down rail and hybrid installation type work, and then the area will be graded down part, but the trees can be planted within that slope, slope area. It will just maximize, instead of being...
Right.
So, what's the, uh, what's the rate of slope on the back there? In other words, if you wanted to, what would be the possibility of getting that fence higher up the hill?
Well, higher fence, it might kind of be higher than eight.
Well, it becomes, it becomes a challenge with the wooden fence up, you know, any greater than eight feet from a logistical standpoint, dealing with deep foundations and wind load and everything else, it becomes very more of a, of a problem to, to try to engineer and design, uh, something that's gonna be stable during those, uh, high wind, um, events. But the grading itself is, we have a three-to-one, we have a five-foot, you know, shoulder, if you will, on the back, and it grades down, and that, that, that three-to-one, um, to, uh, maintain a flat area as much as we can along the residential, um, water's area, because that acts as, as collecting the water that runs off that landscape slope we have channellized to bring it to, to the left in the area so it does not go onto a light problem.
So, what would be, what would be the problem with putting the, uh, eight-foot fence right at the very back of the, uh, five-foot flat area?
It, it can be moved to, to, yeah, and the fence will probably have to be segmented, and what I mean by that is, again, from roughly this point on, the existing basin, there's no construction work going on. So, if we're going to commit to, uh, taking care of seventeen and fifteen and potentially thirteen bird road, my proposal would be to have the noise attenuation fence be installed along the real property line and have a break, then we could come up along, along this area and have it five feet off. The, the, and then we have the landscaping trees behind that.
Right.
The only...
And perhaps landscaping trees in the break?
Yes, and will.
But then they can get, and then they can get access, then they can get access.
Then you get access, so, so then, so we're clear, then there is, again, post-construction, after all construction done, then there is no fencing along the real property line where we moved the noise barrier fence to be five feet off the edge of the pavement. And to, to address...
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't that area all just grow in? I mean, um...
Yeah, it'll grow, I mean, again, we're, we're cutting it down, so, yeah, um, the albaty's are gonna grow as, as was before, two to four feet every, um, so, yeah, it's, it's gonna come back. Uh, I was just listening, the biggest takeaway that I got from the last meeting was during construction is there was concern about children who may would cut through the shopping center. I just took that one step further, not only after construction, but while we're in operation, so I just wanted to mix that.
But if you put the temporary chain link in, you know, that you just drop in and then you take back out, that pretty much solves that problem.
What he's talking about, Warren, I think, is, is when construction's all finished, the kids could still cut through their backyards, and maybe they do now, do they? Do you really care?
No, they drop, they jump the six-foot fence, they walk along that, that cement thing, and they go over the CVS. So, that leaves, from younger, years ago, the younger crowd did.
So, keeps them off the main street, I mean...
Yeah, but it's the pets, too, and it's the pets, too, so they put them down. So, you're gonna have the pets going right into the albaty's in your own backyard.
Just leave it alone, Warren.
I, I like the idea of the two fencing with the albaty's in between. And I don't know why you're not considering putting the continuation of the beautiful fencing along Kingston. It's gonna make the whole property look nice, all the same.
It's cost.
I know.
I think there's a, there's a, you know, reasonable level here. The, um, if the plantings are fairly close to the property line, there's, that's gonna be, as far as screening and buffering, that will buffer the fence, you won't see the fence. But I think the fence...
I would see the fence.
So, I think that the fence need, if the fence is up five feet off the curb line, then you have the full benefit of that, of that noise blocking fence, which you don't have now. So, Steve's right, you're gonna, and no matter what happens, you're gonna end up with more than what you got as a result of this. So, there's, you know, you have to keep that in mind. But I think that if you, if you did that, that, you'd have that full fence, and that would certainly screen lighting as well as everything else. Uh, I don't know what a second fence does for you down there.
It was, it was to cover the property in between instead of taking...
Well, they, you'd have the plantings there.
I not believe corrupting temporarily that we can see. Yeah, after the temporary is gone, we're gonna be seeing albaty's.
Yeah, you're gonna see the albaty's and the trees.
You're gonna, you're gonna see woods.
And then everything else is gonna grow back in.
I'd rather see, I'd rather see the fence.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna put them back, and then they're gonna let them grow. They're gonna, it'll, it'll go, it'll go back to wild, but...
It'll go pretty quick.
It will, it will, but those, those tahula green giants, they do grow very quickly.
I was, I, I'm not sure, I went by that, um, space and...
I live right behind a little store.
Okay, could you, uh, state your name, please, for the record?
Oh, we'll see, I was doing seven-foot, I live behind the, like, the store, okay? I've grown my, I provide, which is right at the end of the, the property line, for twenty years. They're bigger than this ceiling.
Yeah.
Don't you touch them!
Oh, fair, yeah, you know the lines are, she doesn't want you to touch their trees.
They are beautiful.
Everybody wants my trees!
They are beautiful.
Okay, hold on here, go ahead.
If I may, I just need a little direction on, on the fencing at the back. I know there's a lot of, in one way or another. If, if a decision is made to have the noise barrier fencing five feet off the edge of the pavement, I'm more than happy to do that. I, I, a couple of things that, that need to be considered. One is, I mentioned that it's going to be engraved in that continuation line that will probably pull the lap in this area for some reason of, we're not doing any work over here, we're not, we're not did to store, uh, we're not, uh, disturbing any soil, so to, to go in and to cut existing vegetation, to put up a fence, it doesn't make sense, a lot of sense to me, and that, uh, we can leave the natural barrier and the buffer there. If there is noise coming from this area, then I think what we can do is police it on site, get, understand what that issue is, understand what that complaint is from these neighbors, and then be proactive in addressing it.
Well, I would say that if you're not getting a lot of complaints from that side right now, there's no real change happening on the building on that end, so you're not probably gonna get it in the future.
That is correct, and I'm just, again, I'm just hearing it from, from the residents, and we haven't heard anything from, uh...
That side, right.
If I put the, the noise barrier fence five feet up, just so we're all clear, is when I make the return on the CVS side where it has the parking, is the woman that is at three sixty-seven park chute, she's not gonna get that noise barrier fence along the property, she'll get it five feet off.
She's saying, she's saying that's okay.
Okay. Just so we're clear, so, if I can get some direction on where the fence is preferred, I'll make the change. I just, some people...
I believe, I believe that in order to stay true to the, what, what the people believe was gonna happen, you need to, uh, keep it at, at least five feet, approximately five feet off.
Keep it as high as you can.
And, uh, and because I don't, because again, if you go further than that, you start down the hill, and you begin to lose the effect of the, of the height. So, I'd say you, that, if, if that's a fail, a reasonably level area, that five feet back, then, then at that point, I would, uh, say the barrier, the, the noise barrier fence needs to go. And then the plantings could go behind that. And as far as another fence, I don't know, that's, you know, I, I don't, I agree, I, again, I agree with Steve on this, that, that, that those are, those plantings are gonna take the place of that fence, and everything will grow in the natural again, just even if you put a wooden fence there, it's gonna, everything's gonna grow up around it, and you're not gonna, it's just gonna grow back in natural, so it's not really gonna give you any real benefit, I don't think.
And, and that's, I guess, the piece that I wanted to close out with, is that...
I think that's the, I think that's what...
We don't do fences, 'cause again, I don't see the, I don't, I think the, the evergreen plantings will be, will, will complement, uh, complement the second fence that's planned.
Yeah, I don't think they realize how much benefit they'll get from the eight-foot fence at this point, that there'll be, there'll be nothing to see, and so all you have is the green, uh, you won't even, everything will grow in. So, the second fence may be, uh, uh, actually may be more of a problem than it is a benefit in the end. 'Cause take, trying to take care of it, work around it, you have to keep cutting the green down to work on it, that doesn't make any sense. So, um, I, I, that's what I believe would be the best, and as long as they, there seem to be some level of agreement on that, so I think maybe that's how you should go.
I will revise the plan.
Mr. Chairman, just in relation to the break in the fencing, the step down, um, I don't know what number, for that.
It's probably a thirteen.
Right.
What is that key?
Even a, and again, this is more for, sort of say, credit control and also comes with kids, you know, even if it's not going to be a, a soundproof fence, or some sort of a chain link fence connecting the two, I think would probably be wise, from a safety standpoint, cutting through.
You're talking about...
There's still gonna be albaty's to, to...
Well, basically, it's just a fence there so that we know, know, uh...
After construction or during construction?
After.
Okay, that, that, just...
No, I think you have, no, I go during construction.
Yeah, you're gonna have a whole chain link fence in there, yeah.
So, there will be a fence all the way across, it'll overlap in the back, and then there'll be just something between here in order to keep any kids or anything from going through.
Kids are first.
Yes, ma'am, you have a question.
Fifteen bird deck, Chelish Brown, the break, that ends at thirteen, what is up with fifteen and seventeen?
With a, with a soundproof fence down closer along the line, right along the line.
Well, with more foliage, that's already there.
In the backyard.
Go ahead.
Okay, 'cause you kept saying a break in it, in the...
But the break isn't like this, the break is like this, it's, the break is here. So, the fence is here, and the fence is here, and there's gonna, because of the elevation change...
But it'll be long.
It'll be here, it'll be, yeah.
I was just like, I'm not gonna get a break, it's even...
Mrs. Bryant, the way, the way, the way it's gonna work on, on, on your piece of the property is because you have the existing drainage basin that's not being disturbed.
Yes, I tell that.
The proposal, so you're, the proposal is to install the noise fence, okay, one feet off of your real property. So, it from seventeen bird road, which is the forestall family...
Yeah, the forestall.
And the crown family, and roughly, again, so you get out the plant halfway through the bird, out of rally family.
Yeah.
That, that noise fence will be one foot off your real property, okay? Then it's gonna get picked up again.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, so just your question, that's that gap, now, if I understand the gap, what we have, the overlap in here, there's a proposal to put chain link to cut that gap off of.
Yeah, something that's for kids and so forth from going through there.
So, the animals and stuff.
They, if it's offensive, it's gonna be tough for the animals.
That's what I said.
No, they don't want, they're talking about domesticated animals. Well, the non-domesticated won't be able to get through either, but the little, the little things will.
Okay, uh, now that we've done with, any further questions on any other part of the plan here now?
Good, we have a couple of other things to talk about.
You do?
We do. The signs.
Oh, yeah, no, we're gonna do a separate sign package.
Not as late as they, they wanna do it. I don't, I don't agree with that.
Okay, if you don't state your name, then the recorder, who cannot see you or identify you by face, 'cause it has no camera, you must state your name, uh, for the record so that, so that we can do a proper and accurate... A proper and accurate recording of this, of this session, so...
Well, I just said, needs to have a girl's own number, Jack. I just said, the, the plane show furrier furs around the dumpster pads out here to the right. And I said, do you think it's a good idea to put furniture around the dumpsters? I mean, the animals could climb up the trees and get down into the dumpsters. I don't think trees around a dumpster is a good idea. That's just my opinion.
I've seen it happen.
And push her back, father.
I've seen raccoons, it's gonna be a little without trees, so...
Yeah, yeah.
From a visual standpoint, the trees are worse than...
Yeah, if you're making it pretty, make it pretty, but maybe keep a little distance.
A little more distance, yeah.
All right, yes, sir, if something new?
Just got one question about the, you said the trash compact is gonna be moved on CVS building?
Yes.
To the corner, where, is that still gonna, that compact is still gonna be internal to the building?
No. So, thanks, there is a compact there in dumpster that's external. We, we took it from, attached to the building and relocated to be, to be separate, separate from the building, so it's gonna be screened and closure, uh, with access gates to, it's similar to what we're doing, proposing on the, uh, on the opposite end of the property.
Where is it, proposed on that?
The CVS dumpster and compact is mislocation right here. What we're going to do for the small store script, I stand, is combine all the dumpsters in one location, which is okay, okay.
We're gonna have to.
Okay, um, okay, so now, um, with the only, one question we have to deal with right now is the, um, the question about the signs, about a si, a separate sign package. Are we okay with the separate sign package for them, or...
I, that's something we do pretty frequently. They can either submit it altogether as part of the site plan and review approval, or they can do it after the fact, I mean...
I was gonna say, we've done this a number of times, we just did it with Stop and Shop up here with that thing there, we get, did a sep, whole separate sign package for them, when they did their improvements.
Warren, I don't mind having a separate sign package, but quickly, not getting it by occupancy, because if, whatever they do with the signs, they've already put holes in their walls, and they've got electric there, and then they come in and say, oh, we can't change it now. So, I, I agree, getting it in so they can get their construction started, but before the building permit, they should have plenty of time for that.
Uh, justice, I'm just thinking of while you're with justice, um, that may be tough to do, uh, only because, only, this...
Amway?
Okay, my, my longest part of timeline is my Mass DOT curb cut. It's going to be four to six month.
Right, well, well, I'm not saying the sign package now.
Let him finish, let him finish.
I'm sorry.
So, what I would like to be able to do is, is be able to start onsite construction and be able to get, because there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be relocated to build the CBS back, there's gas work, electric work, telephone, the whole nine yards. I'd like to be able to get on the construction site-wise so that I can get messed up, get a pad built.
You mi, you miss, you misunderstood me. Building permit, not foundation and not site work, so you can get all that started. I don't, I, I'm okay with that, but before the building permit is pulled, before you're final on the building, we have the signs taken care of. So, we're talking four to si, you said four to six weeks, here, and then, you know, you've got time. I don't think the, the sign package is gonna hold you up, right?
Can you go here, CVS, so if the town, um, provides foundation permits separate from building permit?
They always do, that's the, you get a foundation permit before you get a, well, you can get a foundation permit before you get a building permit.
Sometimes it's give you just a full building.
Yeah, that's, that's true, so...
Yeah, some do, but...
So, if the town provides a foundation, that's fine, no problem.
Uh, you know, the foundation's gonna be the foundation, it's, once you start building the, the walls, you don't wanna change anything. Though I, I did see that incorrect elevation you put, I kinda liked that sign. On the sign, on the, on the plan package?
Plan, yeah, you have the wrong front elevation.
You put the wrong elevation in there?
It's okay.
It's the wrong building, but I like that sign.
Yeah, I let you guys know that, that's a correction.
I like that sign much better than the other signs.
There we go.
So, to get back on to signage for a minute, um, as you've heard from the CBS representative, is, is we could, should the planning board vote to approve the product... approve the product, then we would accept the condition of private building permit, the understanding that a foundation permit could be issued to at least get the building stuff worked up.
I mean, we could, we could check that, right, Daniel? We could talk to...
Um, whether you could get a foundation permit first?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, I mean, we've done, I know, I know residential, he does that all the time.
And I think for commercial too.
I don't think so much for residential, but commercial, it's not unusual request.
Yeah, that's something that, that's done, but we can, yeah, we can, sure, sure.
Well, that's what I'm saying, just, let's check, make sure. I, I'm not trying to hold the project up, I just wanna make sure that, you know...
No, I understand, no, I understand, just trying to write some logistics on it, 'cause I'm, 'cause I'm on fly here.
Well, what we, basically, what we don't want is to have you come in and say, well, we've already put out, you know, we have to have the signs here, 'cause that's the way we've built it.
No, I, I totally understand where you're going, I'm just trying to work with you and try to come to a meeting. And I just, if you understand my thought, I understand your thought, maybe we can just come to a, to a...
The Firestone store kinda did that to us.
Yeah, I'm not looking to do any of that, but, you know, if you're saying we can confirm that the building inspector will issue a foundation permit...
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't...
That's, that's fine, yeah.
I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
I can check that.
I think he'll, I think he'll do that.
Yeah, he's pretty good about making sure things...
And we got a bank, we got a, we got a bank foundation up here that isn't bank on it for fifteen years.
Yeah, I, I doubt that would be an issue, but I, I will check.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I think we can, if we're all set, if there are no more questions or comments, then I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Updating the facade.
Would we reopen it for the signs?
No, I think that would be separate. I, I mean, I would think that we would, depends how we wanna handle it. Because this is a plaza, it needs a master plan for signage, I don't think we'd wanna reopen a public hearing if we...
Open a new one for it.
I, I, I don't know how we normally would treat it.
Well, if everything fits within their full corners of the law, there's no, there's no problem, building inspectors are approving, final approval authority.
Right, that's true. I think this board would wanna request to see it, though. I mean, I think they could probably just get sign permits, but I...
But let's, let's have a look at them anyway and, and then in case there are any variances whatsoever that are required, we can take care of it at that time. So, yeah, we'll entertain a separate sign package, okay, that should we do. And so what I'm gonna do is close the public hearing on this section of it.
Okay.
And hearing no more questions or comments. And we, and we gotta, you're gonna make some changes on that plan, so we're gonna wait and when we get the changes, the changes that we've talked about on the plan, the location of the, the fence and all those things, and then...
The dumpsters.
I, I think if we're going to be waiting for a new plan to be submitted, it might be best to leave the public hearing open.
Okay.
Because if there's new information shown on that plan and discussion about it, it probably would...
Or anything different than what we've talked about tonight.
True, true.
If it's everything we talked about tonight, it's all set.
Right, just if we wanted the flexibility of being able to make any further changes or suggestions or new information.
Will you continue with that? I didn't know if I wanted to have people all come back just for nothing.
Sure, sure.
That was all. There's gonna be no changes. Have them all come back and say, guess what, no changes, everything we said last time, that's what you got.
Well, you're gonna, they got some parking issues for you, Warren, and they gotta look at that dumpster and give us some numbers on that, the back corner, the CVS dumpsters, and...
All right, I guess I wonder, what's, what's our next availability for them?
Seventh.
Our next meeting is March seventh, I don't know how much time you need. At eight o'clock that night?
It's two, it's right.
It's two. I don't think we have anything on for the twenty-first yet.
You have nothing on the twenty-first yet?
I don't think we do, no, I'm not...
Let me...
Oh, do you know?
Let me take the March seventh and I'll call you, Daniel, to the problem. Because the only thing that I will need to do is get the Florida metrics plan updated, and that's my one lead item. So, I gotta work with that gentleman to see what he can do for me, if we get everything in. The site plan will be probably coming in on the sixth.
Okay.
But I'm giving, if I know it's gonna be longer than that, I'll let you know and then we'll fall back to the twenty-first, is it?
Yeah, the twenty-first, now, do you know when the subdivision is?
Okay, that was just gonna, that's, okay, we'll continue with them until the seventh.
Okay. Till the seventh, that, should we say, if the first public hearing is on at eight o'clock, do we wanna say?
Let's say...
Eight-thirty?
What's our timeframe on this approval?
I can draft a conditional approval for the next...
Well, I mean, timeframe on the continuation of the public hearing, do we have time still?
We have.
Okay.
Eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty?
Um, eight-thirty.
Yeah, that'll do. Okay, thank you all very much.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we're gonna, if the other one decides to, you know, to put it or something. What's that?
I'm starving.
I think that's it. Yes, go.
So, um... We still on TV?
Yep.
I've gotten multiple calls about assignment check over there.
Hey, folks, can you take the conversations outside, the T, the, we're still recording on the, on the TV? Thanks.
So, just looking at our, our signage bylaw that we have, under prohibited signs, section two hundred dash eighty, number N states neon signs or other directly lit signs are not permitted in residential districts in the local businesses and general business zoning districts. This parcel does lie within the residential district. It's a town-owned property, though. And it is a town-owned property, but it is under the residential district.
How many? So, so you don't think you should have that sign, huh? I didn't expect...
Well, it's not just a sign, it's the ones too.
Well, first, did they get a permit for it? They did, so I talked to, they did get a permit for it through the... Billing inspector. Billing inspector. I did talk to the billing inspector and he did issue a permit. And the really only course of action is to, A, talk to the commission over at Hillview or appeal it. I mean, I've gotten a lot of phone calls on this, just one topic. I just have done some research.
Are we even open?
They are open. Signs lit every night. It's a, it's a...
I never see any cars there.
I don't know the status of the business.
Signs like, signs like, if you have people in it, they don't feel that way.
I don't think it's open yet.
Yeah, me either, because I never see any cars there and I drive by it a hundred times.
Don't forget your, your tripod.
But, yeah, I, I'm kind of surprised to see that sign show up by myself.
So, I don't know, I just wanted to bring that up, 'cause I have been getting a lot of home calls, I don't wanna put it in. So, so what are our course of action, we can either appeal it? Yeah. Or... Talk to the owners of the, the property. And say what? And say what to them? We don't like your sign? Ideally, yeah. They're gonna, yeah, they're gonna say we got a permit for it. That's, that's where they'll appeal those, I mean... And they're probably gonna say, and they probably spent ten grand to buy the sign, so... You get a lot of residents in town that don't like me being one of them.
Yeah, 'cause it actually lights up, it lights up that whole side of the street, that light does spill out across the street.
And it doesn't meet our libel, 'cause, I mean, we have bylaws that we're voting on.
You know what, he, he's not new to the bylaws.
That's right.
He knows very well in residential districts that signs like that are not allowed, huh?
The billing inspector or Theresa's?
Well, Theresa's, Nick knows exactly what the bylaw is.
So, why did Jim give it to him?
I don't know, I have no idea.
Well, I actually, well...
What?
They're trying to make that place successful, is what they're doing, so I'm sure they're, that the intent was to help the Hillview Commission, you know, move this whole project along. I'm su, I, I believe they spent a bunch of money on the kitchen, you know, they're, they're trying to bring everything up to code and then, and then, you know, have it be productive. So, I'm sure that it's an attempt to bring it along, well-intentioned as it might have been.
But he, but both...
Does violate the bylaw.
He knows how negative people feel about signs, because of the sign on...
That was one of the biggest battles we had, you know, the sign is...
Absolutely, absolutely, he's in a residential, you know, it's not like he's not in residential here.
I mean, me personally, I don't mind having a sign. I mean, you can definitely do it in other ways.
Yeah.
Definitely a sign that fits the building. It's just hard to go back to someone after they spent a ton of money and got a permit from the billing inspector. It's like if he had said, hey, you gotta go to site plan review and then we, we, we talked to him and we, we analyzed the sign and we changed it and we modified it, made it, 'cause I agree, it doesn't fit, it doesn't even fit the style of building.
No.
That requires, that requires like a, like a, that's like an externally lit carved, you know, wood sign or something.
Yeah, absolutely, just like they got a Ryers.
Neon sign, just like, just like Ryers, exactly. But it doesn't fit the building and, but the problem is that our town official, who's supposed to be our police on signs, already gave him a permit. The guy already spent a ton of money, I agree, doesn't mean that it's right. But it's hard to go back to someone after they said, well, we asked permission, we paid a permit and we got it. It's kinda hard to go back.
Doesn't fit the red hill, yeah.
Oh, the sign doesn't fit, I agree.
Maybe it does, I don't know.
What's that? Oh, yeah, there, there's a ton of people that are unhappy about it.
No, I don't, I didn't, I don't like it personally, but I just, I wish...
It's a fairly dense neighborhood right across the street from it.
Yeah, the people that are getting, that, that are actually getting abused by it.
You can't miss it.
Yeah, the, the people that are getting abused by it, getting...
The biggest thing too now is now you got, you know, maybe Moose, oh, look at that, they got that signage, let me go get some word-lit signage over here. It, it could snowball down and then, you know, you get a couple of businesses right there. To me, it doesn't, it's violation of the bylaw.
He's also got a lot of words on his awnings now. He's got more awnings up now than he did before, right? Yeah, the front entry is not, no longer the Hillview, it says Theresa's on it, and...
And I do get what they're doing over there, they are trying to... Trying to make something out of nothing. But, there's other ways.
It's the wrong time of season, though.
It is the wrong time of season.
You gotta get the golfers in there and then they'll come back in the wintertime.
But, but I wish, I wish...
Yes.
Jim had brought it up before.
Absolutely.
Now, it's just very hard for us to go back and totally appeal the guy, when he's trying to do something with the town-owned property that is harmful.
And it, and it seems to...
Trying to make it something, so...
It seems to gone up after I think the Hillview was meeting anymore.
And there's no way to just, you can't go in and like tweak the sign, it's like, it's, it's just gotta...
Yep.
It's gotta go. So, it's, we either gotta, we either gotta really fight it and appeal it and tell them to leave.
So, you talked to Jim, you pointed out to him, what did he say?
I have to appeal my decision to talk to them. And we're gonna talk to them and they're gonna say, we got a permit, so appeal us.
Yeah.
They're not gonna go, they already spent the money, he's not gonna, can't make a change to it.
No.
So, we either gotta make a decision to go fight it or let it be. I mean, I'd be fine with shut the block, not even lighting the thing, 'cause now that isn't violating our bylaw. And he's not gonna do that, 'cause it defeats the whole purpose. He might as well not have a sign.
Light the ground, the shines on it.
And, yeah, it's directly lit signs are, I mean, it's... I mean, just, just, just picture like across, your, you, your house is across the street from there and every night that's blowing into your room. I mean, that's, that's the way I look at stuff like that, I mean, I have to look at it from the person that calls me up and explains everything to me. How long's the sign been up for?
A month, at least.
A month, yeah. A month and a half?
Yeah, before I went away.
He, he, it was put up, it was put up about the third week of January.
I know, it was brought up at a selectmen's meeting.
It's brought up at a selectmen's meeting, it's been brought up at the historical commission meeting, I just, I mean...
Nobody spoken to them yet about it?
About who?
Nobody spoken to them?
To Nick?
I, I know I've talked to Mr. O'Larry, 'cause I know he's the liaison about going that way. It's just hoping to see in the afterwards. I mean, the guy from Theresa's is gonna say, I got a permit, fight me on it, so we...
I don't think the Hillview's meeting right now.
We gotta go one way or another, we either fight it or we leave it. I mean, I personally would like to talk, at least talk to them, see... But what are, what are his options, he doesn't have any. There's always options. Yeah, take it down. Yeah.
Well, well, here's, you know, no, here's, no, there is an option, okay?
Yeah, turn it off.
No, no, hang on. The question would be whether or not the Hillview Commission approved this, knew that this was happening and approved this sign. So, I think that what we do initially is appeal to the commission to say, listen, it was issued an error, we don't really want to take the, the building inspector to task on it, this thing was put up an error, would you help him, would you help him with a replacement sign? So, if Frank's gonna get some help, Frank Evans is gonna get some help from it, get me something money that is actually more acceptable and the commission is willing to help.
It'll make it, make him, yeah, it'll be easier to swallow.
Exactly, so I think that's the avenue.
What are the chances that he'd be the commission?
Well, I mean, obviously, they have a budget and they have, you know, and they, and they have stuff and they do okay, they had a good year last year, so they might have a little bit of discretionary funds they'd be willing to put into fixing something that was partly of, you know, there was...
They gave permissions, definitely they're...
They're a town, the town people, it's a town committee, you know, and this is something that's for the town and the town made the, you know, obviously made an error in, in, and we believe in issuing that permit, so why don't we get the town to work together to fix it?
Do you think that they would fight us on it?
Um, I think they would understand the bylaw and I think that we might get some support there. And if we can get some support and then, and if they say, yeah, we'll support it, what's it gonna cost? I don't know, let's get Frank in on it now, let's all sit down, try to put something together that makes, you know, rational sense. I think that's the way to approach it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna start frigging, you know, the building is, you know...
No, I don't want to either.
Yeah, well, we, none of us want to, so that's why, so that's...
You're right.
Because this is all, this is all stuff for the town, so let's, so why don't we see if we can solve it within the town and, and get the, the commission to, to realize that a mistake's been made here and, and let's fix it.
That's a plan.
That's probably the best plan.
It's the only plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it really, it solves everything by saying, you know, but, you know, everybody can make a vehicle, we'll get it done.
We messed up, let's try to fix it.
Yeah, yeah, let's fix it. So, I guess what we would wanna do perhaps is see if we can get somebody from the Hillview Commission to come to a meeting.
Yeah, I don't know if they're meeting right now.
That's okay, they're still around.
Well, they're still around, some of them are. I know, I know George isn't, 'cause he's down south.
Who's, who's on it?
George Stack is on it, but it was like, he left on a Friday and it was put up the next week, so...
I would assume that they were made aware that the sign is gonna go there.
I'm hoping.
I think it would be done without their knowledge. So, so they are a party to it, that's why I think we should bring them into it. And, and realizing the error, they may be willing to help support. So, I don't know, do we wanna bring them, but do we want one of us to go to their meeting or...
Oh, there's a meeting tomorrow night.
Is it?
There's a meeting tomorrow night, Hillview Commission.
I'll go. Call me.
Whereabouts?
One forty-nine North Street.
Can I have it at the Hillview?
At, at the Hillview, seven PM.
I've been to plenty of them.
Let's see, minutes, bills, review revenue and expenditures, new business.
There you go.
Oh, discuss proposals for parking lot lights.
Yeah, that we probably ought to be involved in.
Yeah, and restriping the parking lot.
That's okay, we don't care about that.
Yeah, that we don't care about, but it's the other one you do.
Yes, lights, they're gonna have to be careful with the neighborhood, so...
Absolutely.
Well, good, Billy, that'd probably be a good idea for us to go and, okay?
All right, so seven PM.
What time is that?
Seven PM. I'll think of you. I'll be, uh...
Okay, sent it?
Would you make motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing?